Have selected and put on the council. They're here to do our bidding. And to do the welfare of the community as a whole. Thank you for the adversarial type of debate that we can enjoy. With emotion. And then we can get our heads together and make a good, solid decision. What's best for this beautiful city. And each one of the people. I pray in the midst of unrest and uneasiness. The presence of the God of Abraham, God of Isaac, God of Jacob. Will rest on each one of us. I ask it all in the Jesus name. Amen.
We'll now have the adoption of the agenda. Do we have any motions or additions to the agenda? Motion by Scott, second by Wyffenbach, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on awards and recognitions and our Veteran of the Month this month is Joseph Rice, Award Three. Mr. Rice, are you here tonight? All right, come on up. In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we are very pleased to present the March 2015 Veteran of the Month recognition, recognition to Joseph Rice.
Thank you. Joseph Rice served 26 years in the Marine Corps and spent one year in Vietnam from 1964 to 1965. And during his time of service, Rice was the crew chief and flew 186 missions and earned six air medals. Rice served half of his time as a helicopter instructor at the Marine Corps Station in Santa Ana, New River, North Carolina, Fatima, Okinawa, and the Marine Corps Station in, how do you say that? Kia.
Kinyoyi.
Thank you. As a gunnery sergeant, Rice also served as the line chief in the control of 24 aircraft and 150 maintenance and assistant chief. When he retired, he was also the emerald non-commissioned officer in charge of all the flight to line equipment. Rice also served and has been awarded Navy nominations and Medal of Honor, excuse me, Medal of Operations in Korea. Pardon me. Rice has continued his service by volunteering and serving as community veterans through the Disabled American Veterans, serving in the cemetery, the Veterans Coordinating Commission, and membership committees. He currently holds the office of Senior Vice Commander.
As Junior and Senior Vice Commander, Rice organized two chapter Christmas dinners for members and their families. This year event served the greatest number to date. Rice also solicited for prizes for the annual pier wildlife fishing outing for veterans and volunteer guides, ensuring everyone received a prize totaling close to 100 prizes. As membership chair, organized, publicized, and hosted two membership drives signing up members for the DAV and its auxiliary. He volunteered numerous hours during the Forget Me Not Drive and Annual Military Appreciation at Golden Corral. Additionally, Rice participated in the Memorial Day Celebration at Memorial Park and the Parade of Custer for the Fourth of July. At last year's state convention, Rice was trained as Chapter Service Officer, now Council Veterans, on their eligibility two or four times a week at the DAV Hall. He's a veteran that members go to for answers and to get things done. Joe and his wife Carolyn have been married 54 years and live in Rapid City. Together, they have three children, all who have retired from the military, the Army, and Marine Corps. They're both active in the DAV, disabled American veterans volunteering both at Hot Springs and at Fort Meade. Also, Joe and Carolyn are active in the Down Syndrome Association. Rice has served our country, our city, and continues to serve our veterans. His example of service and sacrifice makes him deserving of this honor, and we'd like to send our gratitude. And thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everyone, and congratulations again to Joseph Rice, our Award Three Veteran of the Month. We are now on the general public comment. We have two general public comment speaker request forms at this time. And we'll first go to Jake. Would like to talk about the skate park. You could step over here and say your full name for the record.
This one?
Either one.
Okay. My name is Jake Haladish. And good evening, everybody. We, a few of us have come down to just talk about, I guess, my perspective on skateboarding in Rapid City is that it's, there isn't very many places to do it. And the main skate park across from the boys' club doesn't have any lights. And I just wanted to bring that topic up. The sidewalk along the creek is lit up all the way from the Civic Center all the way down to Waterloo Street. And the parking lot that's empty a lot of nights is completely lit up and all the streets are lit up and there's no lights at the skate park. So that's, I don't know what direction or how to go about, you know, bringing this matter up other than coming here and just even as an issue of public safety as well, but also for the skateboarders to be able to, you know, we have a lot of warm nights and a long season. And, you know, racquetball courts on the west side, for example, have lights till 11:00 PM in the summertime. So that's, that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you very much. And Jeff Begler, Parks Director, if you'd put that on either the Parks and Rec Advisory Board Agenda or Public Works for further discussion, please. Thank you. We'll now go to Eric Press, who would also like to speak on this item.
Hello. My name's Eric Press. I actually just wanted to come and let everyone know that these young kids and adults that skate are part of this community. And, you know, we just wanted to not necessarily bombard, you know, the city council with a lot of things of, you know, we need to do that, we need to do this, or whatever. We just want to let you know that we're here and we're going to start showing you our voice a little more to maybe accomplish something for an outlet for these kids that have chosen skateboarding as a sport. And, you know, BMXing and scooter, you know, whatever is applicable for a skate park. But that's, that's all I was doing today, is letting you know that we're here and part of this community. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. And we'll now go to our final general public comment speaker request form, Stan Adelstein. Good evening.
You know, I have something to hand out to members of council, but thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. My name is Stan Adelstein. I've lived in this town about 83 years. And I'm here tonight to urge the council before they adjourn to direct the city engineer to immediately, immediately contract with the TSP at least to recover some of the three quarters of a million that was wasted. And to contract with them to draw, to prepare drawings and specifications to cure the problems of handicapped access. As you know, I've come to really appreciate that. I've taken a little time to go to your item that you had a opinions, an estimate for the rehab of the, of the Civic Center. If I may use, is this available? Does this work on it? Can I?
It does. We will be doing an after-action review on item 55. And you're welcome to wait until that.
What happens very, and I'll have copies for the people here as well. I have now recomputed since nearly two-thirds of the citizens rejected a plan that did not represent them to expand the Civic Center. I have now taken your numbers, the numbers that were in the public record, and removed the extension factors. As you may recall, and you'll see it in front of you, that you had planned to add a new square footage of 27,601 cases and 6,500 in another. I mean, 18,160. That's been rejected. With removing those from your estimate, the cost now is down to $15,722,000 instead of 180. 15 million instead of 180. So I would ask that you, you do this immediately. That we have plans and specifications, not a general concept, which the people, of course, have already rejected. And that we do something to make the Civic Center accessible to those with handicaps. I see the yellow light. And I hope you all see the yellow light as well. Thank you very much for allowing me this time here this evening. And I'll put copies of this request on the table for other citizens that want to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome to stick around. And you're welcome to stick around for item 55, which is the discussion on the Civic Center after-action review. And that's later on in tonight's agenda.
I'll leave it to you without me.
We are now on item number two. This is Mount Rushmore Road Cone Person Presentation. I thought earlier that Cone Person was Mike Quasny, and now I see Mike back there, so it's a mystery as to who Cone Person really is. Deb Jensen, you have the floor.
Thank you. It's Cone Man. Good evening, Mayor Quaker and members of the city council. My name is Deborah Jensen, President of the Mount Rushmore Road Group, along with Treasurer Lisa Modric and Marketing Chairman Mike Quasny. Mayor Quaker, we want to thank you for the invitation to come before the council tonight with an update on the reconstruction of Mount Rushmore Road. After 10 years of study and development, the revitalization of Mount Rushmore Road is now underway. The importance of Mount Rushmore Road for Rapid City cannot be understated. It is a vital corridor for commerce, for our medical services, our city center, our downtown. It's a gateway to Mount Rushmore and our beautiful Black Hills. It is one of the heaviest-traveled urban roadways in the entire Black Hills. Because of its size and its complexity, the three-year project is split into three projects with three phases within each project. The first project is already in Phase Two. It is from Tower Road to Florman Street. Contractors, happy to say, are on schedule, and that's, of course, thanks to good weather and cooperative planning with businesses, Rapid City engineers, the police department, the DOT and its contractors. The Rapid City Police Department, by the way, perceives there are fewer accidents than they anticipated. And that is actually thanks to our easy-to-understand signage and the courtesy of our drivers. Drivers that have detoured onto Fifth Street are quickly discovering that detouring may not be the best option. In fact, delays are often longer. Choosing to detour is not saving time, gas, and actually is often more stressful. By staying on Mount Rushmore Road, customers and patrons can be assured of having two lanes that are always open. The construction zone is only a few blocks long, and even at 25 mile an hour speed zones, drivers can easily and they can safely follow the cones to their destination. All of the businesses involved in this construction have access. That's why Cone Man was created by the Mount Rushmore Road Group. Don't fear the cone zone. Cone Man brings awareness to the positive side of construction and support to all businesses. Now, you will see Cone Man everywhere. He is our mascot for the Business Construction Survival Guide that we provided to you last year when we first introduced Cone Man. Cone Man will be seen in TV ads, advertising of all kinds, as well as events. You'll see him filling his tank with gas, just having a cup of coffee, or maybe sharing an ice cream cone with folks. It's all part of our marketing strategy that's shared by Mike Quasny. We're asking all of you council folks and mayor to please attend our marketing presentation. It's on Tuesday, March 24th at 3:00 PM. We will unveil a dynamic opportunity for all businesses on Mount Rushmore Road. In fact, all of Rapid City will benefit if the businesses on Mount Rushmore Road are still in business when construction is over. When completed, this road will be an invitation to travelers and to citizens alike to come enjoy the core and the heart of our city. The Mount Rushmore Road Group would again like to thank you, city council members, who have all supported this project in the past, the present, and into the future. And Mayor Quaker, we want to thank you and your staff, including Darrell Shoemaker, for your support and your positive publicity through your office. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for Cone Person or Deb?
Cone Man actually doesn't speak, but Mike or Lisa or I could answer questions.
We'll go to Alderman Jerry Wright.
I just want to emphasize to our community that during this construction period, that even if it's a little more inconvenient, please stop by your favorite places on Rushmore Road and spend your money, help them stay open, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we have a motion to acknowledge the Cone Man presentation? Motion by Estes, second by Nordstrom, any discussion? We'll go to Darla Drew.
I just want to commend this committee on the great work they've done in 10 years' worth of blood, sweat, and tears on this project. You guys have done a great job. And I love the way that you've let the entire community around Rushmore Road actually know what's going on. Because that's one of the complaints I hear the most about construction, is that the side streets aren't included in some of these things. And the way that you guys have included the businesses, well done. That's it.
Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to make a comment about the skateboard park, but I didn't know where it would fit in here. I thought it was very, I deemed it very pertinent that I made some kind of comment about it. Because that's the reason gentlemen over here. But I can, I guess I can.
Because it was a general public comment item, the best place to handle it would be in, in committee or it can be added to the council agenda by unanimous consent. I think to give staff a chance to.
Sure.
Jeff was, Jeff Begler was nodding as the presentation was going on and he's interested in the issue.
I just wanted to let any of them know if they wanted to contact me, I'd put it on legal and finance forum, go through the.
I think it'll be Public Works. Next week, Public Works meeting. Okay, it'll be on next week's Public Works meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
What's the date on next, on next March 31? So there is no Public Works meeting next week. It's the March 31 Public Works meeting, which is a Tuesday afternoon at 12:30 PM. Does that work? Okay. Thank you. All right. We're now on public comment items for three through 46. I have eight speaker request forms on item 36 and one speaker request form on item 30, only if there are questions on item 30. So what I'd like to do is I'd, I'd like to, if the council's okay with this, to proceed with pulling off the items that they would like, that you guys would like to discuss. And let's vote on the rest of consent, since there's people waiting. And then we'll, we'll handle 30, the comments on 36 separately. So let's poll 36. Are there any other items to poll for separate consideration? Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 23, please.
Item 23. Darla Drew.
Item 34.
Item 34. Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 24.
Okay, so we have 23, 24, 34, and 36. Anything else? We have a motion by Lewis and a second by.
Second.
Nordstrom to approve the balance. So we're approving everything on the consent calendar on items three through 46 except for 23, 24, 34, and 36. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's go ahead and, and take action on items 23, 24, 34, and then we'll take the public comments for 36. So we do not have any speaker request forms for 23, 24, 34. For item 23, we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 23 is to deny the staff recommendation, sorry, to deny per staff recommendation the request for abatement of stormwater drainage utility fee for Pine Lawn Memorial Park at 4301 Tower Road. I make a motion to approve staff's recommendation of the denial.
Motion by Scott, second by Wright, to approve staff's recommendation of the denial. Any discussion? Alderman Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, I just have a question in light of the, the different outcomes with 23 and 24, and I didn't see a lot about why that was. I don't know who would be best to ask that could explain that this evening, so. Public Works, thank you, sir.
We'll go to Dale Tag.
If you could, Dale, could you explain why we're denying one and approving, it looks like, you know, we've got Memorial Park and then we've got one other? If you can explain that, thank you.
I'll give it my best shot. Item 23 was for Pine Lawn Memorial Park Incorporated. It's a cemetery up on top of Skyline Drive or Highway 16. The classification that we received from the county classified the property as church. And the runoff weighting factor was more reflective of a developed area, a rough parking lot, so on and so forth. Our engineer, stormwater engineer, went in and recalculated the site based on the actual impervious area that existed, and there was a substantial reduction in the fee. Went from $4,400 down to $730. I believe the applicant has requested that the entire site, there be no fee to it, but we recommend that they are still contributing to drainage. They're at the very top of the basin, all their water runs through town. They did receive a substantial benefit from using the onsite determination for what their fee should be. So on to items, item 24. Those were areas that were part of the rural service districts and then have such, or have since been de-annexed. So those areas aren't in the city of Rapid City any longer, and I believe that's the reason that the abatement is recommended for approval.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions or discussion? Motion is for approval. I'm sorry, the motion is for denial per staff recommendation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 24. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. To approve per staff recommendation the request for stormwater drainage utility fee abatement as follows. David S. Lamb, 1,476.81. Gerald Schultzke, 1,691.26. Southern Cross LLC for $247.46. Jenner LLC for $1,806.96. Drainage Commission for $57.15. And the Hanson Larson Memorial Park for $3,494.26. And I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Scott and a second by Laurenti to approve per staff recommendation. And we'll go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach, Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate that. I want my colleagues, if they could take the time to cut this piece, this item number 24 out of their agendas tonight and put it in a notebook and hold it for future reference as it was something that we discussed earlier on in this drainage tax thing that's going to come back up again as these people were forced to de-annex. And this is, this piece of property is so vital for the city of Rapid City that we're going, we put these people in a position for a total of, you know, $3,000 or $4,000. So I just want everybody to cut it out, tape it into a notebook, and keep it for future reference. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item 24? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 34, with Alderman Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 34 is authorized submission of Historic Preservation Commission certified local government grant application for 2015, 2016, receipt of funds associated with the grant, and move approval.
We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Scott to approve item 34. And we'll go to Alderman Darla Drew.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions for Jean or anybody from the HPC that's here. She is.
Good evening.
Hi.
Go ahead with your question.
So Jean, what is these, what are these funds to be used for and how much do you have? I'm sorry, I missed the last legal and finance. I might be repeating things for others, but I just wanted to know. Well, you caught me off guard. I don't have anything in front of me. So is there any specific questions of? How much is it for?
Let's go to our Community Planning Director Brett Limbaugh, if that's right. Brett?
Yeah, this is an annual grant that we get from the state. Our match is the same dollar amount. So they give us $36,000 and we provide $36,000 of in-kind services, both commission and staff. The largest project on this grant is. The remainder, around $15,000, would go to education, some other programs that our HPC looks at on an annual basis, and they help our staff program those dollars.
Well, I certainly can support an educational program, so that was all I had. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion on item thirty-four? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now on, public comment is now open on item number thirty-six. And for those watching, all of the items from three through forty-six have now been disposed of, and they're, they're taken care of. And the only item left to discuss on that section is item thirty-six. We'll first go to Dan Tribby, item thirty-six. And this is regarding the three-hour parking in non-metered areas downtown.
Good evening. My name's Dan Tribby. I work with Prairie Edge Downtown. And if I just had to say in one sentence, three-hour parking can be an absolutely wonderful thing when it comes to the businesses and the customers. We have some pretty unique businesses, great restaurants downtown. And, you know, it's pretty easy to burn up two hours between shopping at one store and going and getting something to eat. You've, you've pretty much burnt up the two hours. I know that, that you guys face a real can of worms there, not just with, with the extended parking, but, you know, we have to pay for the ramp. There, there's just so many things that have to be taken into consideration. Now, you just had action on the trickle-up parking fines, and I don't know if that helps your situation, or doesn't help your situation, but again, if I could just say one thing, and it, and it was the only thing on the table, the three-hour parking would absolutely be a great resource for, you know, especially the out-of-town customers that come downtown. Just share one real quick story. Last summer, had a, had a customer come in from Wyoming, and he went and spent a considerable amount of money at First Stop Guns, and then came to Prairie Edge and, and picked out a considerable amount of merchandise, and decided that spending that money was wearing him out. So he and his wife went and, and had lunch, and when they came back, they either had one or two tickets. And he basically came in, showed me the tickets. I told him that I'd be more than happy to pay for him for those tickets, and he said, you know, that's just not the point. It's, it's how we feel we got treated, and ended up leaving the, the merchandise on the counter and walked out. And that, that's going to happen, no matter what. If you had ten-hour parking, those kind of things are going to happen. But, you know, the three-hour parking, if there'd be any way to work that out and still keep the finances viable for the ramp and, and the bond, that would really be wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. We'll now go to Suzette Cooney, also on item thirty-six. And up next after her will be Kurt Small. Kurt, if you want to get ready.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you so much. I'm Suzette Cooney, the membership coordinator for the Rapid City Downtown Association. Part of our mission is to advocate for our members. We do have a substantial amount of members that did voice some concern about the new structure of the increased increments of the parking tickets. With that being said, we'd like to move forward with understanding the, the need that's for the income generation, but also for the opportunity to keep our city center live and vibrant with our repeat local customers as well as our tourists. So we would appreciate the consideration of the three-hour parking. With that in mind, we understand that maybe the courtesy ticket might not be totally appropriate at that point, and would be open to like a five-dollar ticket or something like that to offset the need based on that three, extra hour. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Kurt Small, and up after him will be Daniel Fernandez.
Thanks. Good evening. My name's Kurt Small. I've had the privilege of operating the Elks Theater for the last 21 years and owning it for about the last eight years, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter. As you know, after the legal and finance meeting on Wednesday, I called, emailed, and messaged some 72,000 of my customers, asking them to contact City Council with their thoughts on this new ordinance. It's important to me that you know this was not meant to portray the council in a negative light. It was to make sure the City Council was accurately informed and not basing your decisions on the narrow information you were receiving from various unelected office administrators. And for the record, I have taken every opportunity to express to my customers and the media that I truly believe we're on the same team. I, I think City Council wants what's best for downtown and all of Rapid City. I hope all of you have had the opportunity to read the letter I sent to you describing just one of the many examples that this new ordinance will devastate my business. I don't want to use my limited time before you to repeat what I wrote, but I would like to add a fact that I withheld from the letter. Some of you and some city employees have referred to people that receive multiple parking tickets as habitual or repeat offenders. We have another name for these people. We call them repeat customers. And they're the very foundation on which our businesses are built. I would ask that you please keep that in mind when, when you're making your decisions. I would urge you to not delay action by suggesting that you need to take a wait-and-see attitude, or by proposing that a study needs to be done. The clock is ticking for my business, and I simply can't afford to wait on this issue. And honestly, if a proper study wasn't needed to implement this new ordinance, I don't see how it can be justified to suggest that we need one for this simple and reasonable change. After hearing from all of us and all the downtown customers who sent emails, if you are still reluctant or unwilling to make this simple change, I would then ask, at the very least, that you revert back to the previous ordinance until a proper decision can be made. A decision that hopefully includes input from downtown businesses, since it affects us the most. Thanks again for the opportunity to address this issue.
Thank you. We'll now go to Daniel Fernandez, also on this item. Up after him will be Ann Henrickson. Ann, if you want to get ready.
All right. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Daniel Leo Fernandez, and I am the AGM of Murphy's Pub and Grill Downtown in Rapid City, and also a managing partner over on Kohl, the former Dublin. A lot of you probably know my business partner, Tony Tomorrow. He's the brains behind the operation. I'm the style guy, so if you like any of the furnishings at Kohl, that would, that was my contribution, so. But I wanted to talk about the parking as well, and why I believe three hours would help downtown restaurants. That's my perspective. That's what I know. And it's no secret that dining time has doubled in the last 10 years. There was recently a study that showed in 2004, the average dining time was an hour and four minutes. Nowadays, in 2014, it's an hour and 55 minutes, right up against that two-hour limit. And the reason is simple. Back in 2004, it was an average of eight minutes to get your first order in. 2014, 21 minutes. Why that huge discrepancy? Well, think about your dining experience. You, you show up, and you sit down, and we're all busy people here, so you check your text messages, your emails, hop on social media, maybe take a selfie, something that wasn't that prevalent in 2004. So all you've done in 21 minutes is put your order in, and nothing else. And the reason why that's a problem for me, somebody that's in the restaurant industry, we put in $1.3 million into the old Dublin to establish Kohl, and we had numerous options, outside of town, other various locations, but we chose downtown because we believe in downtown. We want a thriving downtown. And with that, every day, we're fighting against the numerous corporate restaurants, numerous chains that you're all familiar with here in Rapid City. And at least from my perspective, along with numerous other ones, we can't add more reasons for people to not come downtown, to avoid and bypass downtown. And my personal thought is that the $25 fee there would be one of those reasons, so I just wanted to throw that in there. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you letting me speak.
Thank you. And up next is Ann Henrickson, and after her will be Brett Matherin. Brett, if you want to get ready. Good evening, Ann.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ann Henrickson. My sister and I own and publish Faces Magazine, and we're business partners with James &amp; Ice, who has a beautiful gallery downtown. I'm not here so much on our behalf. We don't have people, unfortunately, that come down and, and try to get magazines or shop for art for two hours. However, we have been downtown as a business, two years on Seventh Street and six years on Sixth Street. And what we do get to do is visit a lot with people. We have some nice leather furniture, we have some beautiful art on our walls, and people come in and they talk to us. And I can tell you that I, I can validate Dan Tribby's story about the gentleman from Wyoming, because I got an earful from him also. And what we do here is people that, that are not very happy, and what we don't want to do is have visitors that are angry and don't want to shop and don't want to come back. And the other thing that has not been brought up is downtown, and again, I've been there for eight years, is like a family. And so when, when one of my family members, like Kurt, like Dan, is hurt, it hurts all of us. We are very supportive of each other. I give recommendations of where to shop, where to eat, what to do, every day when customers come in. And this has become a problem, and I, I really think extending it to three hours would alleviate a lot of the problems. And I would reiterate what Kurt says, go back to the $5 at least, so it's not hurting these wonderful customers that come down every week to enjoy the theater, and to enjoy shopping and eating, and they want to stay for a little longer than two hours. So I would just ask you to consider that. Thank you for your time.
We'll now go to Brett Matherin, and after him will be Tracy Ponto. Tracy, if you want to get ready. Brett, good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me speak. I'm the owner of Soulmate Shoes in the Uniform Center Downtown. We used to be on St. Joseph Street. We've moved over to Main Street. I moved downtown in the spring of 2011, four years ago. Over the last four years, I've seen overwhelming improvements downtown as a whole. People who are visiting downtown are coming for the best shopping, the best restaurants, and the best and the most unique entertainment you're going to find in town. I think there are more reasons to come downtown than ever before, and there are more reasons to stay downtown than ever before. I think extending the parking limit to three hours would really make visiting downtown more welcoming, first of all, but most importantly, it would make staying downtown more feasible for the people that are coming to visit. Like she had just said, we're always talking to our customers when we're fitting shoes and things like that, but to, you know, if someone's finishing up around lunchtime, I'll ask if they're staying downtown for lunch, and they'll say, well, we've got to move the car anyways, we're going to most likely go elsewhere. So I think it would allow our visitors to spend more time patronizing our businesses and going from business to business. I think people who come downtown to eat would be more likely to stay and shop. I think people who come down to shop would be more likely to stay and eat. I think people who come downtown to paint a canvas or go to a movie would be more inclined to go grab some ice cream afterwards, or check out one of the other amazing things that downtown has to offer. So I just think that overwhelmingly, it's a good idea to allow us like-minded businesses to continue to support each other, but then to give our customers the time limit, instead of like downtown being seen as more of a pit stop, it's somewhere where you can come and stay for the afternoon, so, thanks.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to Tracy Ponto, and up next after her will be Miranda Papendick.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Ponto. I'm the owner of Just Gymnastics and Fit &amp; Fun Daycare. My business is not downtown, but we do frequent it. Our daycare brings over 2,000 kids to the Elks Theater over the course of a year. And right now, we know that each week we will pay seven parking tickets on the vans that we bring down. In order to stay in our required ratio, we're unable to drop kids off at the door and go park somewhere else, nor can our staff leave in the middle of the movie and go move the vans. We love that the Elks Theater creates such a great facility for the youth of Rapid City, and having a three-hour parking would guarantee that we continue to frequent this business. On the flip side of that, if the parking remains at two hours and if the amount increases, we will no longer be able to afford to bring our kids downtown. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have two speaker request forms left in this item. We'll first go to Miranda Papendick, and after her will be Janet Wright. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Miranda Papendick, and I co-own AJ's Wicked Salon and Spa Downtown with my sister, Brooke. And our business provides services that require our guests to be in the salon for longer than two hours. And the first question that we always receive from guests is, what's the deal with the parking? With $5 parking tickets, this was an easy explanation, so I could say two-hour parking, then you have to move your car, before getting a $5 parking ticket. The new system has complicated it, and it takes much longer for our team to explain this to our guests. I understand the city needs to make money, and this is why I would like to suggest the three-hour parking with the $5 parking tickets, no freebies. If we could have this displayed in our businesses, it would be much easier to explain, to help educate locals and tourists. We have previously paid the $5 tickets to, for our clients in order to avoid panic. We cannot afford higher tickets, well, especially $25 tickets for these clients that have occurred the parking fines. So a solution we came up with was to work with the Alex Johnson Hotel to allow our guests to valet park during their spa packages or color services. This, again, takes money from the city, but it was a solution for us to keep our guests happy and relaxed during their services. Coming into our summer months, when the hotel is busy, we will have to find a new solution. In conclusion, I would love to see three-hour parking with a sensible fine to create consistency and less confusion for our customers. And if we don't make a decision tonight, we would prefer the old system, just so that we would be able to continue paying these $5 parking fees.
Thank you. We'll now go to Janet Wright, also on this item, item thirty-six. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Janet Wright, and I own a daycare. It's not a big daycare, but I bring my kids downtown every single Tuesday for movies. I've gotten tickets in the past. I don't have a problem paying a $5 fine like she does, but the fact is that if I have to pay a $25 fine, I won't be able to do that, more than once or twice, and then we won't be able to do it either. The thing being is, if you want to come down to see the movies, and then you want to take your kids over and maybe have lunch at the square, and maybe get ice cream or something like that, you have to move your car, which means you have to load everybody back in the van and drive around the block to park on the other side. It's just crazy. You know, what's wrong with three hours? Saves everybody a hassle. Again, I don't have a problem with a ticket if you go over that three hours. I don't plan on ever being over the three hours. I try to follow the rules. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you not have any more speaker request forms on item thirty-six? Public comment for that item is now closed, and now we move right into consideration of that item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item thirty-six, acknowledged discussion regarding the three-hour parking in non-metered downtown areas. I'd like to make a motion, retain the floor, please.
Second.
I'm making a motion. I make a motion to extend the parking limits to three hours and make it a flat rate of $10 per, $10 per infraction, no, no courtesy tickets.
So we'll repeat that. We have a, we have a motion to direct staff to bring forward an ordinance.
No, it's a resolution, I do believe.
It was an ordinance.
This was, was it, the, the fine is by resolution, is that correct, Joel?
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Let's go to our City Attorney, Joel Landine.
Actually, I'm trying to find the action that was taken. I did not work on it directly, but it should have been ordinance, I would think.
I checked, well, I could be wrong, but I checked with legal staff on Friday afternoon. They said it was, the fine structure was passed by resolution.
Okay, the fine structure was passed by resolution, but the hours are probably established by ordinance.
All right. So I guess...
So let me, let's make sure we're on the same page on the motion. So the, I'll interpret the motion this way. The motion is to ask staff to bring forward amendments to the ordinance and resolution to allow for three-hour parking in the non-metered areas downtown and $10 per infraction for going over that.
With no courtesy.
With no courtesy.
Exactly what I was about to say.
And that's okay with the seconder? Okay? And that's seconded by Darla Drew. Now, you still have the floor.
Yes, I did. And the reason I brought forth, and I'm not sure if it's going to fly or whatever, but it was pointed out to me earlier today that, you know, and this is something I thought of as well, first of all, $25 just is going to drive people out of downtown. I don't care who you are, I mean, $25 is pretty scary. And the reason I brought forth, and I'm not sure if it's going to fly or whatever, but it was pointed out to me earlier today that, you know, and this is something I thought of as well, first of all, $25 just is going to drive people out of downtown. I don't care who you are, I mean, $25 is pretty scary. When I first heard that, I was actually surprised we didn't have anybody step up and say anything about it. So, you know, generally, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, and we heard nothing before we went to pass this originally, so I figured, well, it must not be a problem with it. But when the media reports it as $25 the first time, and you guys did do that, that scares people away, and now that's out there, and no matter what we do, it's going to still be out there, and people are going to still be afraid of that. And so I want to just point out to me, the best thing we do is keep this as simple as possible, and I think that's right. The graduated thing confuses the public. They just don't understand it. Whether or not we're, our intentions are, obviously, we're the best. I completely believe, this is, I'm not even sure who brought this forward, to be honest with you, I just had the ordinance to vote on, but, you know, keep it simple, stupid, just kiss it. And I think that's what we need to do. Keep it as simple as possible. We've put all this money into downtown as people keep pulling out, and we have, and for whatever reasons we can argue about, we haven't got the parking expanded. Finally, we've got some sort of historical tennis court we can't rip out now, so we need all the parking we can get, and we need to make it more accessible to the community, bring them downtown as much as possible. And I think when we say, you know, $10, but you've got three hours, I think that's a lot more palatable to the public. I think that when they heard $25, everybody's just like, I'm not going downtown anymore. And I totally do believe that. My children go to tennis and a movie every year. The Parks and Rec does a great job of doing that program, and there's, every kid in town's there for the matinee, and I'm assuming a lot of them don't drive, mine don't, but they do have parents that do. And so I think it's important that we work together. I think we can still meet our requirements if we're doubling our fine. I know that the way we had it set wasn't probably going to work, at least not, I know we only had one month of history, but still, it seems to be not working the way we wanted it to, and it certainly isn't working the way the businesses want it to. So that's my opinion, and the opinion of about 130 emails I got, too. So, I'll yield the floor.
Whereas we yielded, we'll go to Alderman Jerry Wright.
I think I got 71,000 emails, Kurt. I have no problem supporting the motion before us, but I think that the Downtown Association would be wise to work with our staff and maybe members of our council to come up with a long-term study of how we can best handle the parking downtown. It's always been a battle, and you are the experts of how your business should run. It's your parking lot, really, and it's in our jurisdiction simply because it's our right of way. I'm not going to make any motion at all on this. I just think it needs to be a dialogue between Downtown Association, Destination Rapid City, the businesses, our staff and council members, as appropriate. Are there other things, is there a long-term fix we can do to this where we're not in trouble? Now, for instance, I know, I've heard the discussion that if our revenue falls below because of the no change of penalties and so forth, we may be in trouble paying bonds if we keep changing things, and maybe not. But we need to stay viable and solvent, and we need to meet your needs. So if you'd set up a time meeting with our staff, I'd appreciate it. I will support Chad's amendment.
Thank you, Alderman Wright. We'll now go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This reminds me of a movie that I watched where, I think it was Jack Nicholson or something comes out and says, you can't handle the truth. I sat through a parking study. The truth and the fact of the matter is the best way to resolve the parking problem downtown. First of all, from the study plan that came back, that we all politically chose to ignore because they said, put meters up and down everywhere. That way, the businesses can have control in their immediate areas. Tonight, we heard from restaurant owners and long-term parking needs, which I completely understand, and I've had this conversation with Kurt. But the fact of the matter is, if we go back to three hours, the people that need the short term are going to come in here and go, man, I can't find a parking spot because everybody's parking in there for three hours at a time, and they're taking the fine and they're parking for six, four, five bucks, or whatever it adds up to, you know.
Ten.
The point, the fact of the matter is, is I would be in favor of, you know, I'm not ashamed to say that I didn't actually do my homework when we rolled this through. I thought someone else did, and I relied on some other people to bring this up when we voted these increments through, and it seems not to be functioning properly. Because we sat here for years with the two-hour parking and the $5 tickets and everything, and it seemed to function properly, and people were willing to pay the fines. The other option, I would say, is to roll it back and add from Sixth and Seventh up and down meters. And the reason I'd say put the meters in there is people can feed those meters for however long they want to stay there. They got to be costly enough, but not too costly, if that makes any sense to people. Costly enough so that they're not people parking in those things all day to prevent the users, the true need users that want to use those spots for two or three or four hours at a time, and you can put limits on them. Because I know for a fact that nobody can control, I mean, the people that run the downtown businesses know their parking needs better than anybody else. They know them better than I do. We went through these studies before. I have no interest in having a long-term study. Well, one of the other things is that we, I believe that the public voted on a parking ramp downtown that hasn't been built yet, and I know that puts stress on you guys. So in between, if we roll it back, if there's a need for longer-term parking and we meter Sixth and Seventh Street, that gives people that option. But there's a lot, as soon as we do this and roll it to three hours, the two-hour, the people with the short term are going to come in here saying the same thing we heard tonight. Listen, I need short-term parking. There's no short-term parking available. So the argument goes both ways, guys. But I do understand that business owners downtown will have, should have the best control. The best control is handled by meters, and whatever they are, a buck an hour, two bucks an hour, whatever it adds up to, there's a number there that would make sense. It doesn't affect the revenue bonds. The other thing, we talk about revenue bonds, people just want to place it on the fact that it handles the parking garages. That's far from the truth. Business owners that are downtown, the parking in front of the streets are maintained by the city, the snow removal, the maintenance, those types of things. If you move to Rushmore Crossing or somewhere like that and go pay their rent out there, it causes a common area maintenance, they're going to have snow removal, they're going to have tax on asphalt. And if anybody, we got the equalization coming up here, and these, the rest of my colleagues that haven't done it are going to see what the taxes on asphalt is. Sometimes you've got to be careful what you wish for here, guys. If we want, if someone would make a motion to roll it back, I could support that, and we could leave it at that, or we can add meters to achieve some of the things that we can get more parking for a longer period of time. But in understanding that we're going to put a parking ramp in sometime, I guess I shouldn't promise that. I think we are, and I'm not sure when it's going to happen, but that would help alleviate some of that immediate problem downtown. But if we roll this into three-hour parking without thinking it through, we're going to have, we're going to have the same meeting with another group of people in here saying, hey, listen, I don't need your long-term, I need your short-term. One of the reasons we went to this, this incremented process in my mind was to try to get rid of some of the people that, the employees of downtown or whoever they are, what we call frequent flyers, I think somebody made mention of that, that it's worth their time to pay those fines versus going and renting a spot. I've been through this, guys. If you want to go down that road, you're going to find that we're going to be in the same boat next week. So if we roll it back to the two hours, add some meters so that they can give you some four, five, six, 10 hour, whatever you guys want, we can do that. So if somebody wants to make that motion or agree with me or not, thanks.
Well, let me say this. We have five council members waiting to speak on this item. The motion is to direct an ordinance and resolution amendments be brought forward to go to a three-hour...
Yeah, there's no way I could...
And a $10 ticket, no courtesy ticket.
Right.
That gives us three more opportunities, assuming smooth sailing, which is not a safe assumption. So this means it'll come to legal and finance next time, most likely, and then two readings at the council with another legal and finance meeting in between. That means we're going to have four more discussions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate that explanation, but I want to warn my colleagues that if you want to go down this road, be prepared. So, we can roll it back. I think they've been comfortable with it for several years, and we can add some meters so they got some long-term. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Richie Nordstrom. Richie, thank you for putting this item on the agenda.
You're welcome. I was just going to say, thanks for the emails, folks. I'm the one that brought this up, so I appreciate public participation in this whole project. And I'm going to be supporting Alderman Lewis's motion on this because there's a lot of things that will give us an opportunity to take a look at it. Personally, I would like to take a little bit longer time to take a study of it, but if we can come back with an answer within a couple of weeks, or at least a partial answer within a couple of weeks, I'm going to say it's April 1st is when we're going to be doing our next legal and finance. I could be wrong on the date, but, so this item will be coming back up. So, I just wanted to applaud everybody that came forward with all the emails. I tried to answer as many as I could. If there was any errors or misconceptions or misunderstanding within those emails, I did my best to get the correct information to you because there was a lot of assumptions and misunderstanding of the current ordinance, and so I appreciate the opportunity to get that information out to the public. If I can ask a question of Alderman Wyffenbach, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
Yes. I would like to know if there was a recent parking study, because I've been looking for one, and I haven't been able to receive one, so if there is a recent parking study, I'd like to see it.
Alderman Wyffenbach, do you deem it pertinent to answer the question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate that, and they are still relevant. It's not a recent study, but I'm telling you, you can hear from these guys out here who've been through it. Most of the business owners downtown have been there for a long time. Sit with them, talk to them, look at the history. When we did the study, there was this previous study to that one, and it came back with the same resolution. If you want to go down the road of having a study that's going to tell you to meter downtown, fine, I won't support it. But the fact of the matter is, they do need the parking ramp, which has been pushed back, at least for another year, so it does put extra pressure on them. The parking, the parking lot, garage will come at some time, I would assume, but the fact, there is no recent one, Richie, that answers your question. But it's recent and it's still, I mean, as recent as it was, it was still relevant as to the one that we did 20 years prior to that. Every time we do, and it comes up with the same solution. Because people, the business owners that are downtown, Richie, it's best for them to control the parking in front of their businesses. And the only way you can do that is to be able to segregate where their needs are in sections. The only way you can do that is through meters. You can't blanket a three-hour and then have people want 15 minutes, and people are in there for six hours. That's the point I'm trying to make. If that doesn't make sense, I'm not sure what to say. So, thank you.
Richie used all of the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't believe that quite answers my question, but if there is a study out there, I'd still like to see it. It doesn't have to be part of this motion, and I'm not going to make that offer, but I think getting some more background on this would be helpful. And again, I just want to thank the public for their participation in this process. To those that are not hearing what we're trying to say, I sincerely apologize, but we're trying to get some of your issues addressed, and there's some other ideas that are getting floated out there, so I want to thank you for what you did tonight, for taking the time out of your evening to attend this council meeting. So, again, thank you very much for participating.
Thank you, Alderman Nordstrom. We'll now go to Alderman Steve Laurenti. Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for the finance office, if I could, please.
Please.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a question on, I have two primary concerns in this whole, you know, particular issue, and that is, the viability of the businesses, obviously, they generate a lot of sales tax revenue for the city, and they do a lot of good for our, for our community. The other concern that I have in this particular issue is the bonds that we have because city government is involved in downtown parking. My understanding is we have a $2 million bond that we recently refinanced so that we could get a better rate on that. Where are we at with that? I understand February, we were down 15, 50% in those revenues generated that helped pay for that bond, and if you could just give me your opinion on where we're at, I don't know if you have any feel for where we're at in March compared to last March up through this point in March. So if you could answer that, that would be great.
We'll recognize our deputy finance officer, Tracy Davis. Tracy.
I do not have any numbers for March yet. The February numbers do have, give us some concern when the revenue is half of what it was from February of 2014. So that does concern us. We can't pay off our bonds till 2028, so we do have some time there yet, and we are required to have 120% coverage.
And, and I'm purely, you don't have to answer this, but I'm asking for your opinion on the proposed amendment.
I think it is definitely something to consider. We'd like to run some numbers, though, to make sure that we feel that we can still meet our 120% coverage.
Okay. Thank you. And, you know, my final comments on this, honestly, it's very frustrating because we deal with this constantly, and I think Alderman Wyffenbach is right, we're going to have a different set of people that will be sending us emails or coming in and lobbying us for shorter-term parking or metered parking, and maybe that is something we need to look at. I do support the proposed amendment because I think we do have issues with our revenue when we're looking at February over February from last year. So I am concerned that we do need to make a change, I'm hoping, you know, and this is the whole problem with maybe some of the comments that we heard initially from the owner of the theater. The fact of the matter is, we may not necessarily need a study, but I'll tell you, the staff that we rely on, these non-elected administrators, do a valuable work for this council. Without their advice, without their information, we would be just shooting in the dark. So they're extremely valuable for us to make an informed decision. Sometimes that takes a little more time than some of you or some of the people who've come to the council with an issue may not like the speed of how we make decisions, but the fact of the matter is, they have to be made so that we don't have this particular issue where we're dancing back and forth trying to take care of this group and that group. And so I think that this will be an improvement for our revenue generation, so I do support it in that sense. And I am still looking for information. Obviously, we'll get some more information from staff before we get through the second reading, but I do support it at this point based on what we know at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Laurenti. We'll go to Alderman Brad S. Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, I'm a huge fan of downtown. I'm really impressed with the square and how it's come along with it. The whole story of downtown kind of seems like it's two steps forward and three back. Seems like over on the, next to the gals that have Wicked, there's quite a few empty storefronts and stuff, and it just, just doesn't seem like we can get the whole ball rolling all at the same time. You know, I don't do Facebook, so I didn't get to see the Facebook page. So if I could, could I ask Mr. Small a couple of questions?
May.
Thanks. On your Facebook page, did you fully spell out to the, to the viewers that the first, under the new setup, the first ticket's free is complimentary, and then the second one's 10, and then if they don't have any for 90 days, it starts all over? Was it very clear?
The main body of my message simply stated that the new ordinance had adopted a structured fine system that results in $25 tickets for repeat customers. Later on, in the, in the comments section of that, the entire ordinance was posted for all to see. I also responded to every comment that I could that had questions about it to make sure that they understood. And the biggest concern was from my weekly customers to where, for all intents and purposes, in four weeks, they're in that $25 category.
It seemed to me like they gravitated right to the 20, straight to the $25, just in my opinion, but anyway. Well, I appreciate that. Thanks. I was just, I was just curious. You know, for the, for, for the people at home listening, or people might understand, might not understand, but, you know, we have a, we have a downtown district, and anybody that builds or starts a business in this town outside of the downtown district, your plans are reviewed, your occupancy is calculated, and those businesses have to furnish parking on their, at their own expense for their business. And costs of that parking include, you know, the development of it, then the continual snow removal, and the striping, and the chip and sealing, and the maintenance, and such as, such as that. And, you know, and I understand that downtown's an economic engine and an economic generator here in town, but so is Founder's Park, so is Bacon Park, so is the General Mall. So, and, you know, the bonds, the bonds that we're talking about paying is a drop in the bucket in terms of what, what it really costs to have this parking downtown. You know, and I, you know, and I'm a little bit reluctant to sit here tonight and vote on trying to fix this issue from the dais. I'm not sure how I'm going to, how I'm going to vote on this tonight with Alderman Lewis's friendly amendment. But if you want to feel sorry for somebody, or don't feel sorry, if you want to see something that's an injustice, I live over in Founder's Park. Drive through that beautiful office complex over at Founder's Park. Now, that's mostly office, but the calculations that we require people to develop parking lots is based on food service or retail. Drive through that parking lot and look at the spaces that that developer was required to install. And there's maybe one or two more buildings that could be built, but look at the empty spaces. I mean, that parking lot rivals the airport. I mean, I, is all, you know, I'm just, part of me wants to, well, what I was wondering if Mr. Small put on his Facebook, if he asked the people that, if this proposal caused[1790.08] if, if, if this proposal caused a revenue shortfall, if his viewers were willing to acknowledge that the, the revenue deficit would be, that they'd be willing for their property taxes to go up to handle the revenue deficit that may cause. So, anyway, I, I'm not sure how I'm gonna vote on this, but, but, anyway, I just think that the bonds is the cheap part. And, and I think that, you know, I know Mrs. Papendick's father has a lot of parking lots, and he knows what it's cost to own and operate them. And he might, I don't know if he's told his daughter, but it might be cheaper for her to pay parking tickets than have to develop her own parking lot. So, anyway, with that, I'll, I'll close. Thanks.
Alderman Charity Doyle.
Mayor, I've noticed City Attorney Joel Landin has been in the queue. I would defer to him and then come in afterwards if...
Very good. We'll go to our City Attorney Joel Landin.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I will say, I've worked for the city for 10 years, and our offices handled the parking ticket complaints. And I know you got an email from Stacy in our office. I will say that the courtesy tickets, this is the first time in the 10 years where we've received parking calls with people who have something nice to say. Prior to, to the adoption of the courtesy tickets, every call virtually was angry. There was not any good calls. Now, people are actually calling to thank us. I will say that, you know, in the story that was told earlier about the person that came into town from Wyoming, that was the idea behind the changes that were made, is that that person who comes to town every few months and does shopping shouldn't get a ticket. Now they get a courtesy ticket and it resets. So, next time they come to town, hopefully, they don't get a ticket. There are definitely some people, though, that were parking downtown, and we're just paying the $5. And I guess if they pay it when they get it, and don't ever let it collect, then it probably is a pretty cheap way to park. I know when they looked at the graduated fine, the feeling was, they looked at who was on the boot list, and, and who do we deal with as repeat offenders? And it's not repeat customers. Generally, it's people who live and work downtown. It's usually younger people, and that's generally who's on the boot list, or some of the business owners, frankly. Although, I'll say, the person that was probably most prevalent on that list has no longer, has a business downtown. But, I mean, that's who we saw on the boot list. That's not to say that, you know, if somebody goes to the Elks every Tuesday in the summer, that they might not, even if they pay all the time, they would have never got on the list. And certainly, nobody wants to chase people out of downtown. So, whether or not the $25 is too punitive, that's not really for me to say. You know, I don't think, I know we've talked a little about revenue. I don't know how concerned we should be that the revenue is down at this point. I think that was somewhat expected, that with courtesy tickets, people are getting their courtesy tickets right now, so the revenue's gonna be down. The question is, in four or five months, what's gonna happen to the revenue when you start getting some of the repeat offenders? However, I will also say that when you set it $25, you set it at that amount, hoping to change people's behavior. So if you're actually successful in changing their behavior, so they don't longer get tickets or continue to park that way, then you're also gonna have a revenue problem in the long run. So I'm not saying that we shouldn't look at it. But I will say that the courtesy tickets from the staff in my office have been viewed as a success, and I, I hate to just see them casually thrown away, but we also do obviously need to address the needs of the downtown businesses. I will also say, to answer, I guess, Alderman Nordstrom's question, I think the, the study that, that Alderman Weifenbach talked about was a while ago. I think Captain Johns at the Police Department did it. It might be worth looking at, just so everybody can kind of see the last time. It's not, I wouldn't call it recent. But the idea was that you would meter the downtown, and then you could create, you wouldn't have to have uniform parking on every block. You could have long-term parking, you could have short-term parking. You could vary the cost based on the demand for parking in that area. So while a meter on Quincy Street might be less expensive for, say, 10 hours of parking, than a 10-hour meter on Main Street. So you would kind of adjust the revenue that way, and, and you could, just like a business, charge more money for premium spots, places people wanted to park. But again, it's been a long time since that study came out, so I, I don't quite remember what was in it, but it may be worth all of you to take a look at it again. But I will say that, that study was not meant with universal acclaim, is my recollection, which is why it's sitting, collecting dust in a desk drawer somewhere. So, my experience with parking is, no matter what you do, somebody's gonna be upset about it. And you're never gonna make everyone happy. So, just some food for thought. If you want to, we can certainly look at and bring forward an ordinance amendment, doing what, what you're requesting that we do tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I do agree that movies are longer, meals are longer. There's a winery downtown. People are often doing multiple things that are taking longer than two hours. I think it's important to understand, however, how this came to be. And when we were looking at this, this issue, and, you know, again, a couple of, a couple of readings, I mean, it's, it wasn't, it wasn't a quick process. One of the questions that was asked from the dais was, did the city work with the Downtown Association to get that buy-in? And the answer was yes. So to have all of this happen after implementation is certainly news to us. So, there are ways to bring it to our attention. We thank you for doing that. You know, that, there are some things that, that can be looked at. What's also important to know is that the finance office did take a look at this structured system. And taking a look is if we were gonna be able to meet those obligations. You know, we'd, we'd hate to have to charge downtown business owners for the parking and do away with it. I think the meters might be another idea. What concerns me the most about this, however, is that we can find a solution. I'm confident we can find a solution. But doing it on the fly from the dais with a flat dollar amount, without knowing if, if that dollar amount makes sense, I think is dangerous. And that's one of the things that have, have come back to bite us in the butt plenty of times, that we, we try to appease everybody from up here, and, and, and you can't, you know, when you've got the cameras on you, you can't, you can't weigh everything easily. It's, it's gonna take some discussion. I don't know what the answer is in the short term, but I think, you know, that this does warrant further conversation. For instance, the courtesy tickets, that is working. We want to welcome the people who come through from outside of the city, and not penalize them. One thing I learned tonight that I did not know, was that you can accumulate those four or more tickets in one day. That I didn't know, and that is a problem. So I think there are other things we can look at than throw in some arbitrary flat dollar amount and, and, you know, changing things. And just throwing a number out for a number's sake, I mean, that concerns me. I don't think it's, I don't think it's responsible. Obviously, our finance officer is not here tonight. We're gonna need, even though Ms. Davis is perfectly capable, I'm not sure who that would be delegated, delegated to. We're gonna need to have some numbers run. We're gonna need to take some look, take a look at the data. I can't support just doing an on-the-fly $10 thing tonight. But I will say that I would be glad to step up and help whomever come up with a solution. I just don't know that doing it here tonight is, is the right answer. So, I don't know if there's a way, Mayor, to roll back, or what the logistics involve, to get it back to the, the $5 thing that people are comfortable with and understand, until, I already spoke, that wasn't actually a motion, but thank you. A little enthusiasm from the other end of the dais. Until, until it can be studied, because we need to make sure that we're not selling the city short. We need to make sure there are not any ramifications down the road for business owners or the city alike. I mean, this, you know, we are all in this together, and I think there is a solution. I just don't know that the one on the table right now is the solution. I yield.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderman Darla Drew.
No?
Oh, sorry.
Well, I do have some experience with Parking Task Force. I was on the Task Force in 2008, 2009. And we were looking, of course, at these very same problems. But we had an interesting thing happen, when we really looked at the numbers. We were looking at how much it costs to have the meter maids downtown, versus how much came in from the tickets. And guess what? It was a wash. We weren't making any money at all. And I'd like to know from the Finance Department if that is still the case. And maybe she doesn't have those numbers tonight, but maybe that's something to consider for our next meeting. What also concerns me about, she can, if she, if she can...
I cannot answer that. I would have to take a look at the numbers.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like you to do that. Get back to me. With the hours, I can support that. I can support the three-hour change. But I don't know about the forgiveness tickets, the courtesy tickets. Because if that resets every 90 days, aren't we gonna be looking at half the income every 90 days? I mean, this isn't a one-time deal. What? I, I don't know. Whatever, whatever. I just think that we're setting ourselves up for a bad precedent. We may have made a mistake on, on some of these, this item. I think we could show, would, would go back and look at it. I really think that Charity has the right idea there. It needs to be addressed again. We have to change this, and I love the idea of three hours downtown. That's it.
We'll go to Alderman Amanda Scott. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor. And I would like to make that motion to reverse back to the original ordinance prior to the adoption of the February ordinance, if that is allowable by our City Attorney.
You know, it's not really on the agenda in that way. It was a discussion of three-hour parking, so I don't think there's really notice to people that you were intending to do that. I think as far as, you know, I don't know, I, I would defer to the finance office what the effect might be. On the one hand, I think that's probably just my, my gut reaction, is that's a better, if it's gonna take a while. And generally, my experience in watching these parking things work out, it takes a while to get anything done. So back to the status quo would probably be a good way to do it. However, we've been giving out courtesy tickets for a while now. So, you know, the courtesy tickets, the understanding is that we would be short revenue in the beginning, but would make it up with the higher graduated fines at the end. So if you just go back to the $5, then you're kind of taking off that, that assumption. So I don't know how that's gonna work out. But I think there are also, now that, and now that people have been kind of briefed on the, the courtesy tickets, what the reaction's gonna be when the courtesy tickets just disappear quickly. So, I think it might be better to place it on an agenda and, and have a discussion about it, and, and a little more than, like, has been discussed tonight. Just do it from the dais.
Thank you, Joel, because that's where I was going. I, I have a tendency to agree with Alderman Estes and Alderman, or Alderwoman Doyle, that we shouldn't be trying to Monday night quarterback this game here from the dais. So, Mayor, if I could, make a motion to send this to Legal and Finance for consideration.
Define this.
Uh, this reviewing the parking ordinance.
So we have a, we have a substit, and we'll, we'll allow this as a substitute motion, because she asked the City Attorney for advice before. Go ahead, Joel.
I think that the, one of the other crucial is that your proposal is to go back to the previous status quo while the discussion is going on. Was that, that was my understanding.
Well, based on your information, I'm changing my motion to send this to Legal and Finance for reconsideration of the motion, since what, correct me if I, if I misheard you, but I understood that the consideration of the entire parking ordinance downtown, not just the hour, is not on the table for, or didn't have proper notification for this discussion tonight.
Right.
So I'm making a motion to send the parking ordinance for downtown to Legal and Finance for consideration.
And we'll handle that as a substitute. Is there a second?
Yes.
There is a second by Charity Doyle. We are now discussing the substitute motion, which is to take this item in total, item 36, without any direction to staff, to take it to the next Legal and Finance meeting, which would be April 1st.
April Fool's, no.
Want the floor?
I do, thank you, Mayor. I still have the floor. The main reason, to, to just give staff time to review this, to give the public time to weigh in on this, I know when I responded to several emails concerning this issue, I, I did try to let people know, this is a much larger issue than just changing the time from two to three. It opens up the ordinance again, and so it's gonna have to go through two readings anyways. Even if we just tried to, you know, quarterback that decision tonight, it would still take two readings. It still takes preparing the ordinance, because the hours is locked into the ordinance, the fees are in a resolution. So it's gonna take time anyways, and if we're gonna open this up or reconsider it, I, I agree with, you know, Alderman Laurenti said it, Alderman Estes said it, Alderwoman Charity Doyle said it. We need to take the time to make sure that we do this right, so that we're not looking at this every single council meeting and trying to, to rejuggle and try to make another group happy. So, I, I could not support the original motion, but I can support this one in taking another look at it. Thank you.
We'll now go to Alderman Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will not be in support of this motion, and simply because, although I've been accused of being the poster child for ADD, I did not take this lightly. I didn't come up with this out of that thin air. I discussed it with some individuals who have, are stakeholders downtown. The biggest concern I have here is just, is, the issue is three hours. It's not, it, we're talking, you said it's not about three hours. It is about three hours. It's about the time. These are the folks that are telling us that they have the business downtown, they need the time. And there might be some other people that don't want time, but they're not here, and they're not talking about it. And they must not be too concerned about it if they're not, because I've had plenty of, plenty of contact for those who are. And I know that I've gone downtown and gotten many tickets, just because I was over by 20 minutes or whatever. But, you know, time is of the essence. That's why I brought this forward now, because right now, perception in the public is that you're getting a $25 ticket. And that's gonna be, the longer that's out there, the harder it's gonna be to change that perception. It's gonna affect those people a lot, a lot more. We can sit here and discuss it all day long, but I don't own any business downtown, and nobody else does up here. So it's their livelihoods that are being affected, and I think it's very important. It's been driven home, and it's really come, more I sit here, the more I think about it. We have put a lot of money into revitalizing downtown. We've, we've gone out of our way to make sure that happens, and I think it's, parking's obviously paramount for that to happen. So I think we need to make it. If, you know, the city has to find another way to pay those bonds, well, I don't know that I wanna, I have a suggestion at this point, but I'm sure we could figure something out. I think we'll still make the bonds. I'm pretty confident in that. But, you know, as far as the courtesy tickets go, I don't like that idea to start with. I, I just got a thing in the mail that says I was in a toll lane in Denver. I have no idea that I was in a toll lane in Denver, but I'm gonna pay the ticket and go on my way, and I'll still go back to Denver. I'm not gonna boycott the city because of something that happened, you know. I've gotten parking tickets in many cities, I still go back. I think the courtesy thing's a nice thing to do, but honestly, I just think that if even three hours, most people aren't gonna be too upset if they get a $10 fine after they've been sitting there for three and a half hours. I mean, that's, you know, somebody will, but generally speaking, that's a pretty generous little gift to give someone, three hours of free parking. So I, I think public perception just is key here. I think we've gotta get this out of the media as fast as possible and get it turned around, because I think the longer it sits there, the worse it is for everybody. And as far as I can, with what Mr. Estes is saying about, you know, required parking spaces, I think it's a separate issue, because I completely agree with that. I think we get a little ridiculous with the amount of spaces we require people to come up with when they build. It really kills, and it kills development huge. I know a lot of people, there's, that aren't going forward with projects, because they don't have enough space, and, or they can't remodel, because they don't have enough space with new parking requirements. I think we need to, I realize some of that's built into code, but we need to look at maybe some revisions to that part. So that's a separate issue. But as far as downtown goes, I think, yeah, I, like I said, maybe it's a little fast, but we got four readings from my proposal. We had four readings of public, public hearings to deal with this. And I think we could still do that in that time period. So, I will not be in support of this motion. Thank you.
Alderman Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does this motion have a key in it that turns it back to the 2R, where it seemed like everybody was a happy medium? It does not have that?
This motion takes this item as is and puts it on the April 1 Legal and Finance agenda.
If Kurt would have marketed the Civic Center, it'd probably be being built today, as many emails as I got from his, his constituents. I have an honest concern for him, because I see where he's saying, and the people that came here tonight that are getting the $25 tickets and stuff. I also want to say with a caveat, that, that being said, that I sat up here long enough to know that, you know, Kurt Funeral Home does a special thing down there, where we waive the parking tickets. So it's not like that we're not cognizant of what's going on down there, and that, you know, we've done a lot of stuff. I mean, I, I got a lot of heat for going through that process when we did that, to allow that to happen. They, the elderly community gets free tickets, or they get waived, their, their tickets get waived. Yeah. They're waived by the city, actually, to allow them to park. Oh yes, absolutely right. Yep. They're waived by the city to let their, those people park, to enjoy the theater. So, I remember getting a phone call from somebody when I was in Arizona on vacation to come back and vote for the downtown square, because we were that adamant to make that stuff happen. I got on the plane, cut my, cut my vacation short, to come back and vote for it. So, this is all important to keep in mind, and I truly believe that the business owners are the best ones to tell how to manage the parking downtown. But the fact is, is we gotta face the truth, guys. There's nowhere that you can... There's nowhere that you can hardly go that you're not going to have meters. And when we, the reason that people get mad when they come in and they park, and then they get a ticket, is they have no expectation. They have no idea how long they can park there. If they come in from Wyoming to come over and shop, maybe their first time, second time to come in from Dickinson to shop, they have no idea how long they can park there. The reality is, if you have a meter there, they could feed it for how long they want to be there, and then they're gone. But you got to make it viable enough so they don't park there all day. Kurt's clients are a perfect example of the fact that people don't mind paying for parking downtown. I think Ms. Papendick's clients, or her business, is willing to pay a five-dollar fee, willing to maybe pay for a meter or something in front of her business. There's maintenance fees for the roads, the striping, I think as Alderman Estes alluded to. But in the interim time, I really don't want to see Ms. Papendick's, or Mr. Kurt's, or the Murphy's business be affected by the thought that there's a twenty-five-dollar fee out there, because there really is. If they can accumulate them all in one day, or if they can accumulate them in a ninety-day period, we could obstruct some of the business that's happening there. But I would also mention, if you are a business owner downtown, to take a look at this parking study that was done in two thousand eight or two thousand nine. Take a look at it and see what it tells you to do. And then you look outside of your Main Street and St. Joe and Sixth and Seventh, you look on Kansas City, and those streets, they all got meters. They all have meters, but you guys don't.
Ron, this is a motion to continue.
It is?
It is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to, you know, if we'll go over the whole parking meter thing again, whatever. I mean, I would like to see it rolled back, but I'd like to have that caveat on there so we can, they can move on with their business not being affected or some period of time or something, so we don't, as I understand it, we move slow sometimes, so.
We do.
Yeah. Except for when we may want to make a mistake and vote this thing in in the first place, so.
Right.
Thanks.
Alderman Jerry Wright.
I can't support the amendment either, and I'm with Chad. We have had a, I really did not get seventy-one thousand emails, Kurt. I got about a hundred or plus. And every single one of them was for the three-hour. I had several calls from people I've known, some of them worked on the downtown historic area since the nineteen-seventies. And that's why I support it, and I think the three-hour parking is reasonable, because everybody gave me justification as to why it was. And I think that it should be studied further, and as I said in my discussion earlier, that it could be an item that would be passed tonight, as Chad suggested, or made the motion, and that the group that owns the businesses downtown would work with our city staff so we're going to come up with a, hopefully, permanent resolution to how we handle parking in downtown. So I cannot support the amendment. I support the three-hour extension for now. Thank you.
Let's go to our chief of police, Carl Jegerus. He's chimed in.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out to the council that we do have four parking enforcement officers. One of them is new, but three of the four are long-term city employees. And over the last several years, we've really adapted our parking enforcement program. We've changed the uniforms, we've gone to more of a downtown ambassador-type employee rather than the heavy-handed enforcement aspect. But I want the council to know that we can be very flexible. Whatever it is that the community desires, we will be able to find a way to facilitate. A couple of things that are important, I think, from a core principle standpoint, is that there's a separation of powers. And being that we do the enforcement aspect of it, most of what you all have been talking about tonight is reference revenue generation, and we should stay out of that discussion. But as far as influencing behaviors of people that purposefully take up the prime parking downtown on a regular basis, I think that's where we are of great value to help you troubleshoot that. So I just wanted to point out those issues.
Thank you. Alderwoman Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there room for a friendly amendment?
There is.
I would like.
Maybe a substitute motion.
Would it?
Yeah. Well, actually, we could handle it either way, but technically it's a substitute.
I don't know that it would be, but you do with it. I'll tell you what I want, and you do with it what you will.
As long as it's friendly.
Oh, it's very friendly. The friendly amendment, or whatever you'd like to turn it into, would be that, since it's going to have to go through the same number of readings anyway, that we get together with finance office and relevant stakeholders within the coming two weeks leading up to that meeting, so that we have a workable something to look at that is more of a solution that's based in fact and study than what we've been entertaining tonight.
There's two ways to handle that. That can be a motion and a second, and that would be handled as a substitute motion, or the previous motion maker of the substitute could accept that as a friendly amendment. Would you restate it one more time?
Yes, that the amendment would be that we have, we get with the finance office, potentially a police department, some stakeholders from downtown, and have something workable so that it's not in idea phase only when it's back on the dais.
Do you need a second?
Need a, probably need a little bit more definition.
So that we can look at the rates, the hours.
Like a matrix.
Yeah. We have something to propose, rather than going back to square one at the next Legal and Finance meeting, that we have something to, I don't know if it's the ten dollars and three hours, but I mean, something to think, I'll come back to it in a minute, before I go off.
So we have a, we have a, oh, that's been accepted as a friendly amendment? So you still have the floor?
Okay. Just, you know, we're talking about doing things in the short term, and if we, if we, as much as I'd like to just say three hours and let it go right now, all the signs downtown would have to be replayed. I mean, it's not as simple as, as one would think it would be. But I think that if we can get some people together, Mr. Small being one of them, Mr. Trivie perhaps, Ms. Papendick, wherever she's at, within the next few days, get something on the calendar, and start discussing what the best options would be, running it through finance, running it through enforcement and dealing with these repeat offenders, we can actually have something workable so that we're, it's going to have to go through the system, first reading, second reading, and it takes a while to get that item that's first reading worthy. We can probably have a lot of that done prior to this Legal and Finance meeting, so that it, the, or that it goes through as quickly, but as methodically as possible. I yield.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to ask a motion maker a question. My primary concern or primary issue is getting data, collecting data. Would you be receptive to taking a look at the study that was done by the police department, Captain Hendricks, if I'm correct on that? And would you be receptive to taking that, Hendrick?
Hendrick.
If he would be, if he would be willing to take that as part of a consideration as well? You mentioned several, several police department finance. Would you be receptive to taking a look at the previous study that was done?
If I may address that as the motion maker accepting the friendly amendment, any data is acceptable during this research phase. I don't think, I don't think we need to specify specific reports to be looked at, so.
I'm comfortable with that, because that's the whole emphasis behind what I got this whole thing started, is to actually collect data. And then we've never been able to reach that point, so I appreciate the willingness to work with the motion maker. Thank you.
We'll go to our chief of police, Carl Jegerus. Carl.
I just wanted to point out that the past studies that you're referencing mostly are to do with the location of the time limit involved in the parking. They have nothing to do with the revenue that would be generated from those parking violations.
Any further, any further discussion on the motion? Everyone understands it.
I'm sorry, Mayor, just can you please repeat what the current motion is?
Charlene, do you have, are you able to do that for us, or would you like me to try? Go ahead.
The substitute motion on the floor is to return the item to the next Legal and Finance, which would be April first, for further review of the parking ordinance and resolution. There's a friendly amendment that was accepted to, and to require that the finance, police department, and relevant stakeholders work together prior to the April first meeting to review rates, hours, and any studies that were relevant.
Thank you. Before, before we go to the next two councilites, I need to say this on behalf of our finance officer, because she said this to me. She's going to say, in a couple of weeks, that we do not have enough data to develop a new baseline yet. That's what she's going to say. We can develop some projections, but it's, it's going to be a swag. So please go into this eyes wide open. Our finance officer is, we do not have the data to really develop a matrix at this point. We can use the old ordinance to develop some sort of a matrix, but not the new one. Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just, I guess, I'm hoping that, I'd like to support this friendly amendment, but I was hoping it'd have a little more structure, that maybe the mayor would appoint two council people from the Legal and Finance, and then we'd have the finance officer, three stakeholders, and then the PD, so we'd have a seven-person panel, so it's a little more structured, so we knew who was going to report. Is that? I guess that's a question I have for the motion maker. Are you, are you looking for it to have some structure like that?
I'll look to Alderwoman Doyle, who proposed having this structure or this look at it so that we have something more structured to review at Legal and Finance, to try to, basically, what I understand, the intention of Alderwoman Doyle, and correct me if I'm wrong, Charity, is she simply is trying to jumpstart this, because it is still going to have to go through two readings, because we're talking about opening up the ordinance. We can't get around that.
Right.
So it is going to have to go through two readings.
And I want to jumpstart, as you do, but I'd just like to know the structure and limitations, so that we know who else is going to be involved in that jumpstart.
Well, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Considering I'm not the boss of staff, that would be up to the mayor, so I would defer to him. But I would gladly volunteer to be part of that solution-finding committee, because I think there's an answer here. It's just, as you can hear, it's not going to be done up here in a very cohesive or coherent manner.
All right, thanks.
Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm going to, I'm going to pose a question to Ms. Papendick and Mr. Kurt, if so they could both want to answer my question. And my question's going to be, what are we going to do in the interim? Because we got the same problem. When we walk away, if we, if we vote this, I mean, we still have the same three, we have the twenty-five-dollar ticket problem. We're not going to meet again until like April. So in the interim time, you guys are going to still experience the same problem.
A nod would work, too, if you want. Either way, it's good.
That's fine, that's fine. I just, I'll make that comment, and then I'll, I'll ask Chief Jegerus, Mr. Mayor, if he has access to that parking plan that was a third-party proposal. Is that what we're talking about for information that Richie wants? Alderman Nordstrom wants? Mr. Propose that to Mr. Jegerus.
As far as a third parking, third-party parking plan, I'm not aware of that, but if there was one done historically, it should be part of a council agenda. So I believe that we could have some research done to locate that.
I think Captain Johns has that. He was involved heavily in it at the time, and I think he was lieutenant at the time when that took place. So if you converse with him, he'll have it. If you read that thing, if you get that to the people who want it and you read it, you'll come up with a real quick, I just really don't know what we're trying to answer here. Obviously, the mayor's already told you guys, the finance, I mean, when we're at Legal and Finance, Colleen was ready to come out of the seat when she seen the numbers and, you know, of how far it was down. She doesn't have enough time to tell you guys what, how it is affected. But in the meantime, those people's businesses are being affected, and that's what my concern is, right now. I mean, if we could roll back this ordinance and go back to two-hour, would that suffice you guys until we figured this out? There you go. They're shaking their heads yes. Why can't we do that, councilman? Thank you.
We have several sidebars happening on both sides. Not picking on anybody, but if we could focus on. Alderman Jerry Wright. Jerry.
Just to clarify for the friendly amendment order, is that this would include a document that would be possibly draft copy of the ordinance, correct? Is that what your intent? That's your intent, so it's not just a study or discussion, it's a draft copy of the ordinance. Thank you.
Joel Landeen.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say, hopefully, there won't be a lot of effect at this point, because we're still on courtesy tickets. You've got to get over three tickets before you're over ten dollars anyway. So hopefully, there won't be a lot of impact in the interim while you look at this, but I mean, at some point, you can decide, I guess, if you're going to change it or roll it back, or just so it's on the agenda and go back to the status quo until you get a more long-term fix. If it's going to take longer, maybe a more long-term fix.
Alderman Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to urge my colleagues to be patient. I understand we've had a lot of influential emails, and that's great. I think we need to get that. Our community and the citizens need to weigh in, and, but we need to make sure that we're making a wise decision. With that, I support the amendment that we have at this point, and I just want to clarify, and hopefully, the media will help us here, that since we're all in this together, the twenty-five-dollar ticket, as we all know, is a fourth violation within a ninety-day period. That's when you incur a twenty-five-dollar fee. Let's hope that that gets out there, because it didn't get out there. And I just want to reiterate that, so that hopefully, that will get out there into the media, so that people understand the first ticket they're going to get is actually going to be free. And it won't be until your fourth violation in that ninety-day period that you would get a twenty-five-dollar ticket. So let's hope that gets out there. But I want to encourage my colleagues to stay the path of getting the data we need that we can, because the fact of the matter is, we just changed this not long ago, and we don't have all the data. Our finance officer told us that at Legal and Finance. That doesn't mean there isn't other data that we can get, that we can't use the data from the old model, and we can decipher that and weigh all of that and make the best decision possible. Thank you.
Alderman Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to clarify something, because we've had a lot of people commenting that we'd like to just suspend the rules and do something to make it more palatable downtown in the interim. We cannot allow that type of free-for-all. I hope you understand that, that this is an ordinance, there's a process in place, and we don't have the power, nor should we, to just suspend an ordinance while something's being studied. Even to repeal the one we have now and go back to five, the five-dollar and how it was before, we would still have to take it through that process. So we're trying to keep in mind to getting this done as efficiently in short term as possible. I just want you to understand that we can't wave the magic wand and undo it. It's going to take that same amount of time. So, you know, hopefully, you're understanding that, and you're going to continue to just keep educating your downtown patrons in the meantime, and we will try to come up with a workable solution, keeping in mind all of these great points that have been brought up this evening. So I just want you to understand, again, we can't just simply suspend it because, because we feel like it, we want to, we want to make somebody happy. We still have to take it through the process.
We'll go to our chief of police, Carl Jegerus.
I just wanted to share with the council that we went live with the graduated fines on February first, and in the month of February, we issued eighteen, a little over eighteen-hundred parking citations, of which twenty-eight were to the twenty-five-dollar level, meaning that those persons had also gotten fifteen-dollar and ten-dollar and courtesy warning citations. The first thirteen days of March, we issued a total of four hundred and twenty-six citations, and twenty-one of those were the twenty-five-dollar tickets. So as you can see, we're starting to get the twenty-five-dollar tickets more frequently. So in the first, basically, month and two weeks, a little over twenty-two-hundred tickets, of which forty-nine were the twenty-five-dollar ones.
Alderman Chad Lewis.
I haven't talked this much on this subject in quite a while, but I do feel the need I haven't talked this much on this subject in quite a while, but I do feel the need to say, I never suggest that we just willy-nilly do this overnight, and didn't think that was possible, I was suggesting we send it to staff for, to work on and revise the ordinance, which I know, I said would take four readings, and it does take four readings, so that was my entire intention to start with. Obviously, we're starting to get people in the $25 range, now it's only 49 people, but they probably have told 49 people, and it's not good for the downtown, I don't think. So I do appreciate everybody's intentions, I just don't think we're gonna, I mean, it was well-intentioned ordinance, obviously, we're trying to do our best to make it palatable to, to the visitors, make it nice for them, so they don't get a ticket, and we try to keep the repeat offenders from, from, from piling up, you know, tickets and, and just paying the fine, whatever, but I think that it's before us, we need to deal with it, and I am more than willing to volunteer to, to meet with the stakeholders and try to work something out as well. So, anyway, I just wanna make sure everybody understands, I wasn't trying to change it tonight, 'cause I know it takes a process, and there's quite a process to it, but to get the ball rolling sooner than later and get that message out to the public is the biggest goal here for me. Thanks.
Alderman Darla Drew.
I just have a couple more comments. When I was listening to the, the ladies from the daycare centers, also the YMCA, and people that take the kids to the movies in the summer, summer's usually about 90 days, you know, so they are gonna be there once a week, you know, and, or maybe twice a month, so they'll max out pretty quick, and this will be very expensive for them. So I think that the people have spoken, the people that are impacted by this have spoken, they're here tonight, and we took such pride in the fact that the people spoke in the Civic Center vote. I would like to respect our people again and give them the three hour that they asked for. So I will be supporting the motion by Chad Lewis, and know that it'll go through a process, and hopefully, we can get this thing resolved fairly soon. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Everyone understands it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Laurenti. Scott.
Aye.
Drew.
No.
Lewis.
No.
Doyle.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Estes.
Aye.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Roberts. Wyffenbach. We have seven to two.
Thank you. Motion carries. We are now on non-consent items 47 through 56. I do not have any public comment for these items, have I missed anyone? Have I missed anyone? Last call. Public comment is open and closed. Item 47, and these are ordinances, we'll go to...
Excuse, excuse me, Mayor, I believe we, we missed the bid consent items.
No, we didn't.
Oh, we didn't?
No. Well, hang on.
No.
Did I miss any items?
You went through 46.
Okay, went through...
46. We approved it.
We went through 46. Everything's been approved through 46, so...
Thank you, Mayor, that was a long discussion, sorry.
That's all right. Go ahead, the floor is yours, Amanda.
Item number 47. First reading, ordinance 6038, and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by advanced engineering for TJ Wachawatsky, sorry if I got that really butchered, for the rezoning from low-density residential district to medium residential district, and this is a motion to acknowledge the applicant's withdrawal. I make a motion to approve or acknowledge.
Motion to acknowledge the withdrawal, and a second by Estes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and the item has been withdrawn. 48.
First reading, ordinance number 6039, and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Jake Berger for a rezoning from general agricultural district to light industrial district for property located at 2319 North Plaza Drive, and make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Estes, to approve item 48. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 49.
First reading, ordinance number 6036, and ordinance to amend provisions concerning appointments to the Rapid City Planning Commission by amending sections 2.60.020, sections 2.60.030, section 2.60.100 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Estes. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 50.
First reading, ordinance number 6031, and ordinance to authorize the Planning Commission to act as the zoning board of adjustment by amending section 17.54.010 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, and a second by Estes. And before we proceed to the vote on this, I want to say something for, for the record. I know there will be another opportunity for a second reading. This is a very big change as it comes to how the planning department operates, and I want everybody on the council to understand what's happening here. Several years ago, we had approximately 86 boards, commissions, and committees, we've consolidated many, and what we've done with Brett's leadership in the, in the community development, or, uh, community planning, is we have taken approximately nine appeals boards and, and put them into two, and now we're doing a further consolidation. What this does is this eliminates the zoning board of adjustments, which is a separately-appointed board by the mayor and confirmed by the council, and takes all zoning, uh, zoning board of adjustment items to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission would then act as a zoning board of adjustments. We have basically three quasi-judicial boards, and I'm aware of, in the city, and a quasi-judicial means that items that are heard by that board are not appealable anywhere else except for Circuit Court, and the three boards that I'm aware of are the city council, to some extent, and the human relations commission, to some extent, those appeals do go to the state commission, so it's not totally quasi-judicial. But the zoning board of adjustment is probably one of the most powerful boards in city government, because if they, if they deny what, if they deny you, and you, you can't come to the council under state law, and you have to go to Circuit Court, and it can cost you seven thou, the last time somebody appealed a zoning board of adjustments decision, it was approximately $7,000 to do it. There would still be a zoning board of adjustments, but it would be our Planning Commission, and the way it would work on a Thursday morning is they would hear the zoning board item, and then they would, then they would adjourn and reconvene as the Planning Commission. Zoning board of adjustments does the kind of adjustments to, if, if you can't fit a house, for example, on a lot size the way it is, you come to the zoning board of adjustments, if you need a, an adjustment in parking, you come to the zoning board of adjustments, and the, and these are often permanent adjustments to the, to the property, which affect the value of the property and all the neighbors. So I want you guys to be aware of what we're doing. I strongly support the change, and I wanna make sure that there aren't any surprises. So, with that, any discussion? We'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, for explaining that, and, and just again, for the media and for the audience here tonight, as well as watching this later and streaming or watching it live, just wanna re-clarify, the, the planning commissioners are not adopting the zoning board of adjustment, they are still two separate meetings, and they both have two separate requirements that they have to operate under. So as the mayor stated, the zoning board of adjustments will meet first, they will actually adjourn, and then the same people will sit in for the next meeting, which is the Planning Commission, to consider the Planning Commission items. So they are two totally separate meetings, satisfying different requirements, they are just made up of the same nine plus two alternate members. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Item 50. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 51.
Item number 51 is a first reading of ordinance number 6037, and ordinance to change the name of Rapid Street between Third and Fifth Street to Nico Street, and between Sixth Street and Mount Rushmore Road to Opolda Street by amending sections 10.48.010, 12.08.050, and 17.36.010 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, and second by Laurenti. In honor of our friends in Japan, Nico Street, you'll be able to drive on it the same way you would in Japan, on the left side.
No, Chief, I, oh, Chief Jegerus isn't here. No, I don't think, Mayor, that's allowed.
And if you're still awake. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 52. Chad. No, I'm sorry, we'll go back to Amanda. Take 52 through 54, please.
Thank you, Mayor. A request by DC Scott Surveyors for Dolores, trustee for the preliminary subdivision, for proposed Lot 1 of Victor subdivision number 2, generally described as being located at 7400 Longview Road. I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Motion by Scott, second by Wright. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number 53 is a request by Dream Design International, Inc., for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed Lot 3 of Block 1 of the La Grande subdivision, generally described as being located approximately 1,000 feet west of North Elkvale Road and north of Elgin Street. I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Motion by Scott, second by Wright. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number 54 is a request by Dream Design International, Inc., for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed Lot 1 of Block 1 of Shortcut subdivision, generally described as being located in the northwest corner of East Anamosa and Elkvale Road. I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Motion by Scott, second by Wright. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Let's do this, if there's no objection from the council, what I'd like to do is handle items 57 through 63, get through the end of our agenda, and then we'll take a 10-minute recess and come back and handle items 55 and 56. Any objections to doing that? Okay, all right. I do. For those of you who couldn't hear what she said, I do, there's several of us who do need a brief break, so...
Thanks, Mark.
Hey, we're on consent public hearing, items 57 through 61. Do you know, I have any speaker request forms on these items? Have I missed anyone? Public comment is now closed.
Is it approved?
We have a motion by Lewis, and a second by Wyffenbach, to approve. All in, Darla, you had your light on for this, or was that for later?
That was for the last one.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now on item number 62.
Item number 62 is resolution number 2015-008B.1, levying assessment for cleanup of miscellaneous properties. I'm, approval?
We have a motion by Lewis, and a second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Alderman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I, may I ask Tracy Davis a question on this one, please?
Excuse me.
I think I really wanted to make a substitute motion, because I believe that we were looking to, well, maybe it is, I'll just ask you, Tracy, this currently, the way it's written, is to approve the levying of this assessment, correct?
Yes.
Okay. This was a, um, appeal brought forward from the applicant, and we are now reconsidering it after staff has had time to go back and relook at this code enforcement issue, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the recommendation from staff is to approve the assessment and leave it alone and let the applicant pay full rate, correct?
I believe so. Jeff Barber may have a little bit more information.
Oh, yes, thank you. When we looked into this, we didn't see anything. The pictures are attached, we did, our contractor did do the work, the city did pay for it. The gentleman making the appeal had, would've had a normal 15 days to pay the bill without the late fee. We had never heard, the last council meeting was the first time that I had heard from him or seen him on this issue. Why he waited that long, I, I don't know. So, yes, the staff would appreciate if we just went through with this assessment. I would, I would advise you to be careful about forgiving too many of these, or you're gonna see a lot of them.
Thank you. I was just, wanted to make sure that we were still on the recommendation per staff. I can support the motion on the floor. Thank you for answering the questions, both Tracy and Jeff, thank you.
Item 62, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bill list, item 63, Tracy.
There are no additions to the bill list. Total amount, $7,333,969.56.
Motion by Scott, second by Laurenti, and this is under the new, the new process, and it matched up again. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're going to take a 10-minute recess, and we'll come back and handle items 55 and 56. Thank you. We'll go ahead and reconvene, and our deputy finance officer would like us to vote on 56 first, so that she could pass the resolution, which needs all of your signatures, and then we can discuss 55. So can we have a motion on item 56? I'll read it. It's a resolution for the emergency resolution canvassing the vote for the special municipal election held on March 10, 2015. We have a motion by Wright, and a second by Estes, to approve the, the emergency resolution. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're now on item 55, and I'll go ahead and read this into the record, since this is an item I had requested to be put on the agenda, and this was Rushmore Plaza Civic Center After Action Review, also known as an AAR. The purpose of this item is to solicit feedback and input on the next steps for the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center. This does not all need to be decided tonight, this is a start in the process. Suggested steps include, one, scheduling an after-action review with the executive task force, also known as a hot wash; two, discussing the principles outlined last week at the press conference, which would include a less expensive plan that addresses, A, the Americans with Disabilities Act and other code compliance issues; B, minimizing the impact to existing events to the greatest degree possible; C, future marketability; and then the, the third point that would be discussed would be some level of reconstituting and reappointing a new executive task force to bring in new ideas while maintaining the historical knowledge and building on efforts already achieved, so likely include a, some sort of a mix of, of new members and existing knowledge. We'll first go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate you putting this on the agenda, 'cause I think it's important that we, we, uh, go back to the conversation. A couple things that I think should be added to the conversation, one is unwinding the resolution on 6018, combining the CIP and the Vision Funds. So as we go through this process, and the council sits up here and thinks about things, I think there's no need to have that resolution anymore, or ordinance, or whatever it is. So if we look at unwinding that, and the second thought process is to bring back the Vision Fund, uh, process, the process that vets it into the community, there was a couple people here talking about the skateboard park, and they wanted to make a comment on it tonight about when skate parks were just a, an idea of a bunch of young people, and I remember going... And I remember going to South Middle School as a citizen and visiting with then Alderman Alan Hanks Award One at that period of time. And it was the process that was put in place, that they would go out in the community, and people would come forward with the wildness, whatever their thought process was that they thought would be of interest or economic value. Whatever the principle was, they would bring it forward, and we vetted that thing. And several young people just kept hammering on this. It's a hundred and eighty thousand dollar project, you know, and people had ambitions about it. They vetted it through the then five-year plan structures, and they built it. And today, that thing's still standing, and it's incredible, the amount of usage it gets. It's incredible, the amount of people that have found an opportunity to, you know, do something and that they actually contributed to bring into the light. So I think that those... As we develop this conversation, I think that those are some things that we should include in our conversation. Number one, unwinding sixty-eighteen. There's no reason to have the Vision Fund connected with the CIP. There's no reason for that. Number two, bring back the conversation of, you know, the Vision Fund process, of vetting in the community, outreach in the community to look at these opportunities. Thank you.
Alderman Jerry Wright.
I don't want to rewind or reject or withdraw sixty-eighteen. If there's parts of it that you'd like to work on, fine, but I think that there was a lot of discussion even before the Vision... Excuse me, the Civic Center project about how we should address the funding of Vision and CIP. And I think that should stay in place because there's an effort by the community to look at the whole process. And I know that there was some concern, or a lot of concern, about how we were going through the hearing process and coming up with projects and divvying out a lot of money and failing to meet our infrastructure needs and so forth. So I think that the overall structure of sixty-eighteen's good. There's specific things that need to be discussed. Have at it, but I don't want to roll it back. Thank you.
Since there's no additional lights, I'd just like to say this. Craig Balzer, the director of our Civic Center, him and I have had a number of conversations. You know, he came in towards the tail end of this process and as a new director, and I think he has some very good ideas as to how to proceed. And he is perfectly situated to help lead with the after-action review. And so my suggestion is, is that we proceed with, you know, having an initial after-action review handled by the current executive task force with the assistance of Craig Balzer, something that others could certainly attend to be a public meeting, just as all of them have been. And then bring forward a report to the council, and then go from there. And then we would discuss items two and three. Items two, again, was to look at a different type of a plan. And number three, reappointing some sort of a task force. And that could, by the way, be the existing Civic Center Board. I mean, we have a five-member Civic Center Board. I mean, there's all kinds of options that are being discussed, and we need to give people a chance to discuss it. So we'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. And I like all of those ideas that you presented in taking some of the assets that we've had in the current process and see if we can't raise the bar a little bit higher as well. I know communications with the public seemed to be a weak point. One of the other areas that I thought was being able to explain the plan very well. We did a good job on it, but we need to find a way to raise the bar and explain it much better to the public. If the council members recall, there was even citizens who came to this council chambers and told us that they hadn't gotten any information on the expansion of the Civic Center. I'm not sure where they were at when all these discussions were taking place, but one of the factors that I believe very strongly is that we have some good assets out there. It's just being able to utilize them in a much better, much more efficient manner. In other words, just taking a look at how to raise the bar and making that communication efforts to the people that voted for it, voted against it. And there was a lot of people, and I'm not looking at this vote that came from this effect as a mandate of any kind. It's just that, for some reason, somehow, seventy percent of the people chose not to vote on this. And that's another factor. I would like to see what we can take into application for future. I think we just need to raise the bar further in so many areas that I'd like to have that chance to have the executive task force. And if it is changes to it, put some more challenges to them so they can do a utilization of all the assets we have in a much better fashion. Thank you, Mayor. I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. Alderman Jerry Wright.
I know time is of the essence, so I hope we can get this meeting together real, real soon, and everybody takes it seriously, and we get results quickly. I don't know if a month is too far out. We need some answers, and we need to move along because we do have a deadline, I believe, of thirty months, from the first of March on or about. And another thing, I'd just like to ask the council. Would the council be interested in if two members of the council, like myself and the Vice President, were to meet with two members of the Civic Center Board and the opposition and just ask them, is there some common ground that we can work with to help put this together? Is that a reasonable thing to do? I'm certainly willing to do it, and there's some interest in their part. If not?
I think it's a great idea. I think, first, it might be wise to get all the... You know, have that meeting and get all of that, which Craig Balzer is already working on, and he would be here tonight if he could. He wasn't able to make it. But, you know, he's willing to help, you know, lead that process, so maybe we...
I can certainly...
I don't know that we want to do that now. I think we need to first let that convening take place, and then... But that's certainly an option. There's several ways to go about this, which is why I'm bringing this here, because one of the suggestions has been to reappoint a brand-new task force, or reappoint the existing task force, or reappoint a hybrid of the two. And that requires some discussion because all the appointments require council confirmation.
I would certainly wait until after this meeting, if it's in the fairly near future. And I'd be interested in hearing from any member of the council. You can call me here, email me. Thank you.
Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if I'll get point-of-order called on me, or what exactly we're talking about tonight, but I guess a little bit of reflection, I guess, is what I want to talk about. But before I even start that, first, I want to, you know... The people spoke, but we had a lot of great people, put in a lot of work on those task forces, and I want one more time, thank them, because for all the time and effort they did to get the project to the point where it could be voted on. You know, I... You know, and I think we all got spit out this back into this thing a lot wiser, and I guess one of the things that I recall, exactly two years ago, when I was going door-to-door, running for this seat, the headline in the newspaper was thirty-eight million dollars for ADA for the Civic Center. And as I was going door-to-door, the average person... They shared... That was not a believable number to them. And it wasn't a week to ten days later. The next headline was thirty-some million dollars for code issues. You know, and those were just... Those were hard numbers for people to comprehend, and I guess is what I... And when I got elected, and the very first meeting I went to and sat in the back and watched the task force, I shared that with them. You know, and we... Transparency, and we think we're trying hard to get everybody out there, and we think we're sharing everything, but, boy, we need to try harder. And when we come up with numbers like those, I just think we have to be as ever transparent as we possibly can be. Anyway, I wanted to share that. I just... You know, I'll play whatever part in moving forward, you know, as I can. I just... I just wanted to share that with all you guys because it's just... Those are huge numbers, and, you know, we get into these committees, and the only people we talk to for a longest time is the people in our committees. And we think we're talking to people, you know, out and about, and, you know, the snowball's rolling, but in actuality, it's not. We go to our meetings, and we talk amongst ourselves, and we got everybody... You know, everybody's convinced within the group, and you go, and we think that the whole world's watching and following, and really, they're not. So, anyway, I learned a lot from this process, and I'll leave it at that for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for putting me at the head of the line here. Thank you. Alderman Estes reminded me of something specifically to the numbers. He is correct that the numbers seem to be far-reaching or intangible, or the people didn't quite understand those numbers. So the other part of it was that making those numbers believable. And that's a request of the task force, the new task force or something, how they can make those numbers believable to the public. The process would include such as, and this is just a suggestion only, is let's get a second opinion on those numbers, see what they look like. The other ideas that you've mentioned in the summary of your link, I just want to stress the part about future marketability. It's another asset that we just didn't utilize in a very positive, strong manner, and hopefully the group can make an effort to see how we can market this whole process so much better. Not saying they did a bad job. That's not what I'm trying to say, is that they did a fine job. I'm just looking to see if there is a process that we can find out, discover, utilize to raise the bar on this. And I, too, also want to applaud all the people that put so many hours into this, all the way from the board president of the Civic Center to the staff that worked on this, and everyone else that was directly, indirectly involved with this. I'm even looking at the contractors for assisting on this project as well. But let's see if we can't find something that can address some of the criticisms that we were getting on this in a much more positive manner and take this forward. Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield the floor.
Alderman Ron Weyfendbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you don't invite the ladies to the dance, they're not going to be there dancing with you. There was a big turnout for this election for one agenda item. So let's not discount the fact that there was. Whether we like the fact that people in the community don't vote at all is beside the point. The fact is, and I think that you think about it, and you think about the groupthink factor, and you think about what the task force was established for. If they were established for to do the best thing for the Civic Center, that's exactly what they did. They can't be faulted for any of that. Exactly what they did. There was a lot of hard work put in, no doubt about that. Are the numbers believable or not? I mean, are they verifiable or not? That's a good question. I think that we've been caught in this a couple of different times, and I've been caught in it. I've been caught in the ADA thing, and I've admitted that. But Lord knows that I will not sleep until I figure it out if those numbers are justifiable or not. The wheels are in motion. I think that there's wheels in motion to see. And I think we've had a couple different people talk about the ADA requirements, whatever it had been, you know? But I'm telling you, I'm not going to stop until the numbers are justifiable. It is something that we, in this conversation, that we need to approach, and I'm not going to go into the echoing Mr. Estes's thoughts on thanking everybody and what are we really talking about. I think the mayor attempted to start the conversation, and I think that's a good thing. And if... From the very beginning, I had a lot of questions that never got answered. The main question that we have to answer is, what is our goal? What is the end game? What do we want to achieve? Once you achieve... Once you answer that question, you can work backwards and easily figure out the solutions. Until that question gets answered, we don't know. I think that the mayor had made... Alluded to the fact that Mr. Balzer's new, and there's an opportunity for him. I've had several conversations with him. I believe that he's going to position himself to make things work. I think that in the thought process, when we talk about how the communication structure was handled or whatever is all moot point, I think, if you recall, this council passed it. The people referred it. The people then voted. So I think the communication process is as the process is. It is what it is. It really is. I mean, when we go and we walk through the communities and we get our petitions signed, and we go out and want to get elected and whatever, there's a certain amount of people we know are going to turn out. There was over thirteen thousand people, and I would like my colleagues up here to look at the results from the last mayor's elections and the last city council elections, see how many people showed up. Tell me there was a communication problem in relevance to how many people showed up to vote. What we have to do is identify the game. We have to have a process that makes sense that asks the ladies to come to the dance if we think we're going to dance with them. If we don't ask them to come to the dance, they ain't going to be there, and we're all going to be frustrated. So, that being said, and I think that there's some questions in my mind still on the numbers. I think I'll get to the bottom of some of them. The task force, I got to say, you know, they accomplished, I believe, what they wanted to accomplish. They brought a proposal to the council. The council voted on it. It got referred. The people voted against it. So, that being said, the most important thing that we can think of is the process going forward. And some of the things that I believe the people of the community lost their confidence in. They lost their confidence in the fact that the council couldn't give them a straight answer on the questions that they asked. It was like a moving target. So if this comes forward again, that we want to do something, let's have those answers for the people. Let's tell them what our end game is. Let's tell them what our plan is and the end game. What are we trying to achieve? I think that question came up several times, and we know one of the things is we want to... We can talk about is ADA. What is the real numbers? What is it really going to be? What do we really want to do with ADA? Do we want to meet the minimum requirements? Do we want to go above the minimum requirements? How do we want to handle the DOJ going forward? Time is of the essence is not an answer. What is an answer is doing it properly, doing it in a way that makes sense, where we get the most bang for our buck, because that is what our mission is as a councilperson. If you go onto the website and read your mission as a councilperson, it is that, is to do what's right for the community and get the most bang for the buck. So, I mean, we can have the conversation about whether we communicated anything properly or improperly. The fact is, if you look at the history, I think everybody did a good job in doing what they thought was right, they thought in their hearts, or whatever it was. So I just think to blame it on someone else, that there's a miscommunication gap or anything like that, is look inside, look at a mirror, and go, look at yourself. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Alderman Steve Laurenti. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the mayor for bringing this forward so soon. We need to do that. We need to look at alternatives. Questioning the viability of the vote, I think, is not something we want to do. I think the voters knew what was at stake. I don't question their knowledge of that. The fact of the matter is, they've told us they want us to move in a different direction, and we need to do that. We need to respect that. So questioning their knowledge of it, I think, is an insult. I don't think anybody's necessarily doing that, and I'm just saying that before anybody goes in that direction. We need to respect the vote. We need to come up with a new plan, and we need to move forward as the mayor's proposing here, and I think this is the right step. Thank you.
Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I have to apologize for being so quiet tonight. I'm on the downside of three days of the flu.
Apology's not necessary.
So if anybody gets sick, I apologize ahead of time. You know, I appreciate what Mr. Weyfendbach has said, and I appreciate what Mr. Laurenti said. I didn't really appreciate what Richie said. I don't think that we should discount seventy-eight-hundred-and-thirteen voters, no matter how many people didn't show up. The people of Rapid have spoken. Where do we go from here? We've got to find where we need to go from here, but I think that one of... We've got to find where we need to go from here, but I think that one of the things we need to do, talking about ADA, is having experts look at this. That's some of the discussions that we've had on this dais prior to this, and when we went into the DOJ agreement, and after the agreement, was we need to bring experts into this. And I think it has to be people from outside of Rapid City that aren't involved in it. We, we need to have that, that outside opinion. We need to have numbers that are verifiable. You know, this election, I heard over and over and over from people, I ask questions, and I'm given a different answer every time I ask the same question. So things were, were changing, or people, or people on the council had different, you know, answers. I mean, everybody was confused on this issue, I guess. I don't want to say that people were blatantly lying on this issue, but there are people out there that say there were people. So we need to have facts. We need to bring the facts forward. The people need to know why we're going forward. You know, if you look at the AMCOM study, and we have, you know, average attendance of thirty-one hundred, what are we really designing this for? You know, we need to, we need to go forward with a plan that's realistic, and that the people themselves want. Like I said, the people have spoken, this is one of the largest elections that we've had in many years, and this was over one issue, so, and also, like Mr. Wyfembach said, the people brought this forward. The council wanted to just push this through and get it built. The people brought it forward, and the people spoke. So, thank you very much.
Wait a minute. There were a number of people up here, including myself, that collected signatures. And I, and, and I will, I will say this, is I heard from the other, from other people who thought I was making a huge mistake by demanding a public vote, and I'm very glad that I, very glad that I and many others insisted on a public vote. When the returns were coming in last week, at first I thought it was like a twenty percent voter turnout, and I was, I was really disappointed, and I found out later, that was only because twenty percent of the vote had been counted, and the voter turnout was more like thirty-two or thirty-three percent, which was very high. So the people have spoken. We're going to listen, we're going to embrace the outcome of the vote. I want to thank everyone for their involvement, thank the committee, thank the voters especially, thank everyone up here, and now we figure out how to, you know, move, move forward. Well, Rogers once said that you can be on the right track, you'll, you'll get run over if you just sit there. And so now we need to move, move forward. And before we go to the final comments on this, I want to say that the comments that were brought forward, and public comment earlier tonight, are very pertinent, and they're, they're relevant as well. But I think, I think for us to, first of all, I think it's important to recognize that the seven-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars that was spent of your money on this was money that was well-spent, and in nineteen, from what I understand, in talking to Don Barnett, in, in nineteen seventy-one, or, I'm sorry, seventy-two and seventy-three, there was a cocktail napkin sketch that cost a lot less, and some of the same people were very opposed to that then. So we need, we need to come up with a, a good, a, a good proposal, but we certainly shouldn't, and we didn't, spend five million dollars on a set of plans and then go ask for permission. So the seven-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars can be used as a baseline for, for future conversation. I think, you know, one, one option would be to simply do the Americans with Disabilities Act fixes, but I think until we do the after-action review and look at all the other options, I think that that would be, that would be, you know, premature to just do that at the, at the very next council meeting. I think that we need, we need to, the, the situation is, is urgent, although it is not something that we need to do tonight. So, but we do need to start the discussion tonight. We'll now go to Jerry Wright. Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I've read this document, and I, I agree, we need to have the truth, the absolute truth, and people need to understand numbers. And the press got a copy of this, and I'm a little concerned that an estimate was given that Forefronts was wrong, and I think theirs was like thirty-six million, it's lined, it's lined out in this. And Mortenson did an estimate of thirty-seven million, and, and Senator Adelstein retired states it can be done for fifteen million, seven-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand. And I don't see a signature at the bottom of this letter saying he's a P.E. or an architect. This is the kind of information that misleads the people. We have a designer firm, Forefront, and a firm out of Colorado, I understand, that worked with them, correct? Coming up with the ADA, and the price was calculated, or recalculated by the contractor. This is where information goes wrong, and I think it's a disservice, and, and I hope the press picks up on this. This is someone's opinion. It's not signed by a licensed engineer or an architect saying this is his due diligence estimate. It concerns me, because sooner or later, we're going, we're going to be talking about this in a month, or two, or three, and someone say, yeah, but someone said it was only going to cost fifteen million. It'll come back to haunt us. I totally agree, the vote was done, you know. There are a lot of information out there that was misunderstood, misquoted, and I think the biggest thing that happened to confuse the people was either misinformation or disinformation. Let them have the truth, they vote, that's good. I honor that totally. And I know that there, there were those that wanted to see initiated measure. It never happened. Instead, the council took the action, I just think it was appropriate, as they should, as we are the elected body of the people, and there were those of us that circulated petitions so the people could vote. So the democratic process did occur, through the efforts of many people. And I think we did well. I don't think it's, it's over. I think we can finish the job somehow, it's going to work some compromise, and working together as a team. But we've got to be very careful, we're dealing with facts and truth, and good communication, which I think we were pretty weak on this last time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wright. We'll go to Alderman Darla Drew.
I just want to remind the council of something that we talked about a couple meetings ago. There are people with ADA issues that need our help now. It can't wait thirty months. I think we, we, they deserve access in the parking lot. I think we need better doors that they can get through to get to the arena. I believe we can do a better job with seating, and I would like to see those issues addressed separately. I mean, we could do those now, we could help somebody get to those events better and sooner. And that's what I'd really like to see, because that's what we're trying to do here. We're trying to get ADA compliance, of course, but we want people that are in our community have access. And to me, having railings on the steps would be one of the greatest things. I don't know if we can afford that at this juncture, but certainly I think we can change some parking lot and, and seating arrangements, and maybe, maybe even the doors, so that's, that's my point, that we should be working on that.
Thank you. I agree. Alderman Tcherty Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure that it's stated, and that you take into consideration, number one, the city of Rapid City ponied up half a million dollars for the preliminary design. The Civic Center Board and the, and that operation, that enterprise, paid the two-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars for the various studies. They're not going to be capable of doing that. You need to be mindful of the financial situation that they are in, as you move forward with either reseating or convening some, some sort of task force. So I guess that the point is, you need to be cognizant of some kind of a funding source. Should any future study, any, any of this need to, need to proceed, who's going to pay for it? And what, have that identified before you get too deep into it.
Thank you. Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure the public understands that I, I'm not discounting their vote, that's not my intent here. I, I am accepting the vote that was presented to us. So there's already a misunderstanding of my intent is to ask the people at seventy percent why they didn't vote. And that was entirely, entirely my intent for that comment, not, not meant to leave the public understanding that I'm discounting anybody's vote. That's not my intent. The, I'm, I'm not sure where that comes from, or why it comes about that way, but I'm just wanting to ask the question, how come seventy percent of the people out there in the public didn't vote? And, and so I don't want to leave the taste in everybody's understanding that, that that is not my intent to make sure that your vote is not discounted. In fact, I, I'm living by that vote, what you sent to us here, this, two weeks ago, and, and I applaud it for everybody that did go out and vote. Thank you very much for doing that. And all I'm asking is that we just raise the bar a little bit farther, figure out how to use our assets in a much better manner. Thank you.
Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind the council that if you know of a particular ADA issue that's not being addressed at the Civic Center, get on the phone, call, call the general manager, Greg Balzer, and then within five or ten minutes, some of the concerns I had, he was addressing them. So, we are addressing, and we have been addressing them. I just, you know, I, I'm not sure the money available to address them, the council's previous left-division funds pay as you go, there's plenty of funds there, I don't think any beyond this council would deny the fact that if the Civic Center needed some money to address some ADA issues that we felt were priorities, they would do it. And I know that the, the people at the Civic Center, I've been in contact with them, anytime they pick up the phone, they'll just, they'll tell you that they work with the ADA to make it to lessen any obstacles that they have there, and if they're not listening to those obstacles, I'm sure the mayor would address that with them. But I know from the parking standpoint, that five-minute phone call with Balzer and Sandra Sheeter out there, and they're addressing it, they're addressing some of the issues with van accessibilities, because that was an issue. But honestly, because I'm not a, a disabled person, I don't encounter those each day, and that's a reality of it. So sometimes I have to reach out in the community and ask the ladies to come to the dance with me, so I understand, and I'm not ashamed of that fact, it's just the reality of it, so if, if we have issues that are priorities, let's prioritize them, we'll get them done. I think there's, nobody on this council will deny the fact that there's money available, there's, there's vision funds sitting there that we could use. If, but the last time I looked at the Civic Center, and I'll relook at it, their 2014 numbers were up, they were showing higher profitabilities from the previous year. The revenues were up overall with BB&amp;B, and, and their bottom line was, I think, right around nine-hundred thousand dollars versus previous losses. So I'm not sure, I'll take another look at their financial position, but if you have a priority that needs to be addressed, let's address it. I mean, even a simple call to the mayor's office, and he, five minutes, they'll be taking care of it, so, I mean, I agree with you that we need to address those right away, and there's especially a lot of simple ones that we can fix. And that was my argument a month ago, it's my argument today, let's get on it, let's don't sit on them, let's don't create more barriers to entry for anybody, so, thank you.
Alderman Brad Estes.
I make a motion to acknowledge this discussion and bring it back, have it on the agenda again for the first meeting in April.
We have a motion to acknowledge and bring it back for an update at the first council meeting in April. Is there, who's the second? Second by Wyfembach? Okay. You still have the floor if you want it? Okay. Alderman Amanda Scott.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and I do appreciate Alderman Estes making a motion, because I was going to propose a motion, and since now I don't have to, I'd just like to make a comment to Mr. or Alderman Wyfembach. You know, Ron, I can't say whether I dance with you or not, I think it'd depend on the music. Thank you, Mayor.
I can teach you. The Bee Gees. Diddy and the Pharaohs. Darla Drew, you're up. Darla, you're up. No? Okay. Can we proceed to the vote? Or do you have your light on? Okay, go ahead.
Are we going to discuss having an AAR in, in two weeks, or are we going to have an AAR and have an update April 1st?
We're going to have, we're going to proceed with the AAR, as I understand the motion, and then there will be an update at the first council meeting.
Thank you.
That's how I, that's how I understand it. And before we proceed to the vote, what I want to make sure everyone understands, I completely agree with Darla Drew on, and what was said on the ADA compliance, the point that I was making earlier is to go out for bid immediately on thirty-seven million dollars worth of fixes without looking at the, the results of the after-action review, wouldn't be wise, although that would be the easiest thing to do. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have a motion to adjourn by Estes, second by Nordstrom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned. Nine twenty-six P.M. Have a good evening, everyone.